Yeah, just driving around down there. But okay, we're streaming now. Ciliums of dollars. Okay, I guess we have a quorum. We know Morris said she might be a little late because she was driving to Cody. Anybody's heard from Jeff? Okay, well, see if it pops on. Then no time like the present. All right, let's call this meeting to order since we have a quorum and we have our technology in place. First item is business approval of the agenda. Just a couple of notes as Dave and I are putting together. Applications come first. I think we've all agreed that's very standard stuff. And then our various projects in kind of order of fairness to completion or urgency and how they line up. Change it to that suits you guys, but that's why they're in their order they're in. We may not get to the end, but let's see. And we may want to schedule an extra meeting to go to falling too far behind. So we can take that up under the next meeting item. Note that the zoning regulations discussion will actually be a formal public hearing. It's right in the agenda that way, but it was noticed that way. Put out here, so that's a little bit to the zoning exchange. And then Commissioner Kennedy, you had asked at our last meeting that we have a kind of rules and procedures bylaws item that we carry forward. So my thought was not to put something on the agenda that we don't think we're going to get to. You know, some public might think, oh, boy, they're going to talk about this and I want to hear about it. Well, we should lure them into our meeting in false pretenses. So that's why that isn't there. But we'll get our planning director to keep that list going because I think you're absolutely right. Let's kind of have what's in the wings, but maybe not on the agenda. So reasonable.
I, yeah, I actually think we probably could do it next week.
Okay.
It's I finally remembered to pull up the ones from Carvey County. David has a couple others, so I think we could have something put together by then.
Okay, I just didn't think we would get to it.
Yeah.
Considering all the stuff that's on here.
And why the fact that the agenda is like almost just a little bit shy of 500 pages. Eight or not, he wouldn't be a big stretch.
Once it gets out of the dirt. Okay, but we weren't trying to slight that good suggestion. Okay, so with that said, are there amendments to the agenda rearrangements? Anything anybody wants to suggest?
I think we need to do our call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did miss call. Guys, people around here don't do that. Okay, Ms. Kennedy, here, Ms. Hanning. Mr. Platt, here, Ms. Thine.
Ms. Thine's leaving on.
Here, did Jeff sign in? Okay, okay, here we have Jeff, so he counts as present. And I've been, as I said before the being started, Ms. Hanning had sent me a note saying she might be a little bit late. She's driving down to Cody where they're staying. Okay, now back on track with the agenda. Thoughts?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
My second. The motion is made to approve the agenda. Any discussion of that motion? I've got my eye on your name on the screen there, Jeff, so are you hearing us? Mr. Thine?
Sorry, I muted. Yes, I can hear you and I agree.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that the pipeline was open. Okay, here are no objections. Let's take a voice vote on that. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Looking at the minutes, we have two sets of minutes in front of us. And did I have some small correction to those? Let's look at the regular meeting agenda. We have eight minutes first.
Mr. Chairman, I know that one thing in the minutes, and that would be under approval of minutes where it says meeting as presented slash with corrections. I really think that with corrections need to be needs to be dropped because there weren't corrections. I checked back on the video and there weren't any corrections to those minutes. So it leaves the impression that there are minutes or there are corrections. And if there's corrections, they should be noted in that.
I take that's actually, that's just right. And I had a similar comment on there was an item in the agenda for considering zoning district criteria amendments, but we never got to that. So I thought it would be appropriate if that is also reflected. What did happen? So for which ones? I think that's correct. We just never got that far. So to the extent that minutes provide somebody a kind of table contents to go back and see what we said, there wasn't anything to say there. So I would add just a thing that I call, once I wrote, I forgot that far of discussion. And then did we consider additional meetings? Nope, we did. That to be deleted from the minutes or a note with respect to agenda that we didn't do that. Similarly, there were no permission comments nor were there any citizen comments. So perhaps just standard practice could be done or read, done, closed, perhaps. Other thoughts on the minutes either of the two?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
For the August 10th or for?
Yes, the August 10th.
Thank you. Is there a second? I second. Are there further comments on the August 10 minutes? You're not all in favor of motion to approve the minutes as amended. Say aye.
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 Thank you. With respect to the August 24 minutes, which are pretty thin, thoughts on those? Anybody?
I move to approve the minutes of August 24, 2022.
My second. Here, the discussion of the August 24 minutes. Now, all in favor of approving them as distributed? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Disclosures, and here I thought we might pause for a moment, given the special circumstances of the cap. We have two members at least that live in the APOC that arguably are personally impacted by what we do with respect to the APOC. Commissioner Kennedy, you're off the APOC.
I am, I am not in the APOC.
So is that something that we ought to be aware of is that people are asking how, where we come by our opinions? In my case, obviously, I have a profession that involves media analysis of ground over problems around the state. And I've worked, I've done consulting work for the city, but none for the county. And I certainly am happy to decline any employment that has to do with the SSIs or the peer reviews of the SSIs and the employee of the county, certainly as long as I'm in this position. So yes, I do make money on local for analysis, but I don't think that it constitutes conflict interest, but just by way of exposure. So let's go through the list. Mr. Kennedy, you got anything you want to share with us? No. Ms. Hanning is not here. Mr. Platt?
Nothing.
Ms. Thine?
Uh, nothing.
And I have made my disclosure. Okay, thank you. That moves us to public applications and the Flutie. Proposal. Mr. Walms.
All right, the applicant is Michael Flutie located at 353 Roger Canyon Road. Their request is to change zoning from ag to rural residential. Current use is residential. There is one dwelling on the property and the property can be accessed off Roger Canyon Road. There were some reviews. The Albany County Assessor's Office, Chelsea Matthews had no concerns. Albany County Assessor's Office, Karen Bowman had no concerns. Miami Rivers Conservation District, Holly Dyer had comments regarding the soils and erosion. Full comments can be seen in the review section. NY dot Taylor McCourt had no concerns. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution were chapter 3, section 5, and chapter 5, section 5. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter 3, section 5F. The board of county commissioners must make the following findings that the applicant has provided the required site plan, the indoor survey. The proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long range growth plan and the priority growth areas. The Albany County Attorney's Office has comments about that. And the applicant has adequately addressed all potential impacts as well as pursuant to chapter 5, section 5, the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice, postponed sign publication, and certified mailing. Staff analysis is that the applicant has addressed the potential impacts the zoning change may cause and has provided a complete application. This property is currently agricultural and a change to rural residential is compatible with existing land use of surrounding properties. The applicant wants to subdivide their property into two lots, which requires the five acre lot to be zoned rural residential. This 49.99 acre parcel is partially in the protection overlay zone, which does not allow subdivision smaller than 35 acres. However, the five lot, the five acre lot would be outside of the APOC with the rest of the acreage continuing to comply with the October protection regulations. It is the planning department's perspective that the zoning change and potential subdivision would comply with county regulations concerning zoning subdivisions and the APOC. Findings of fact, findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referencing this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Inclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation is to approve the Flutie zoning change application, LUC 0822, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings effect and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff.
Thank you. Comments, questions for staff?
I might have to look at it. It's fine to me.
Okay, our onsite inspection. Just kidding. No questions. Mr. Thine?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, I just had a couple of comments. In our last meeting, I was talking about a kind of an area map. I find the maps that you guys have published, just your standard zoning maps, to be useful in getting the area added. Wonder if we could just throw this, the appropriate page out of the existing book and when we're doing zoning changes.
Pages are necessarily accurate. It's not necessarily accurate.
And.
They're accurate enough in terms of locating the property.
Sure, yeah. Well, and what I like about this is the larger context. And that's something that we've now kind of emphasized in our zoning amendment changes is obviously fit into the bigger picture. But can these be?
The book pages aren't accurate anymore.
So we don't update the book?
Well. The online map is accurate.
Online map's accurate. I mean.
Which is the only thing online now.
Yeah.
I mean, we can throw those in, it'll give you, I don't know if they're totally accurate, but it would give you.
Well, Brian, how about a screenshot from the online map?
Yeah, yeah, these aren't accurate. I mean, that's useful for me to know. I just, I'm still a paper guy.
It's a great answer. A screenshot would please you do, right?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, but you were asking about scale. I mean, something about like that, I think.
Scale wise, we can think.
And what I find interesting about this is that it just shows where these little bits and pieces of rural residential are, which is a subject that we're going to come back to in months to come. So I find that helpful. It's one of the first things I'd like to see where we are. And then keying off that, again, in the spirit of the context of the thing, just to the north of it, we see that subdivision that's a rural residential. Those lots are anywhere four, six acres. So these would be non-conforming lot sizes for that. Stayed that correctly. Which would be now smaller ones? Now the ones that are less. Yeah. Not a protection thing, but just as a rural residential zoning.
Well, I mean, you can go down to two.
You can go down.
Lot size.
If you've got an average of five.
So they'd still fit that category.
If it were coupled with some large plots somewhere else.
Yes.
Correct. And I don't know if it is or.
I mean, the overall subdivision, maybe it would be considered.
I haven't really looked. I mean, there are some smaller lots and I think smaller than.
There are, there are some that are smaller than five. None of them are smaller than four. Again, I was just.
Is that a?
Yes. Yeah. And I was just looking at them in this context of is this proposal compatible with what we see around there? And then there's that curious little triangle that's still ag. Was that just a leftover? Yeah, trying to put this in context, the one up just to the north, west east of the Flutie property. Do you have the?
I have it, yeah. I'm not sure if that's.
Oh, the one that's.
Property.
Okay, the one that's right above the.
Rifle Range Road.
What Rifle Range Road is it? Yes, that just a little triangular piece that's kind of an island of ag. I just wonder if there was.
It's kind of similar.
Yeah. Let me pull up the.
We got that piece.
Yeah. And in all that, I would operate, I totally agree with the staff analysis of the APOC and appreciate the fact that the applicant said, okay, I'm stepping out of the APOC as it comes down that quarter section line.
The original application was not like that.
That was that you're urging. Well, there you go. Thank you for staff. Perfectly explicit source. Was there resistance to that?
No.
Seemed like the obvious.
You just told him that. If you want it to get done, then you're going to have to get out of the.
Okay. In this, in the staff report, which was just copied, they said there was a statement, the new lot will require water wells, septic systems. So I was curious about why those were plural. Was that just a chromatic slipper?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're just talking about.
We would only allow one.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Then in your staff analysis, you talk about the potential subdivision and it would comply with county regulations concerning zoning subdivisions, the APOC. I think I'm looking at Mr. Ayers here. Are we kind of getting ahead of ourselves? Should we be?
This is just regarding the boundary is what I was referencing.
Okay.
Because if the subdivision was at all in the APOC and it's five acres, we would say no.
It's be.
Because it has to be 35 acres. That's what that was referring to.
Yeah, so the way it's written, though, it sounds a little like a kind of a reaching for it. It is the planning department's perspective that the zoning subdivision would comply. I just was slightly uncomfortable with us telling them ahead of time that we think they're subdivision. That's okay. All we have in front of us is the zoning change. So.
That's what they, in the report or in the report.
I mean, we can amend that verbiage. I'm just going to strike the talk about subdivisions and how you think it complies because we don't have a subdivision in front of it.
Sure.
Okay, good. So I would hope for that as a potential event, but just let's.
Yeah.
Subdivision, be the subdivision.
Just make a note and we can just strike that out of the staff report.
Okay, that was the only other, only other comment I had. And the applicant is not here today.
Yeah.
I did not send them a link, so this is possibly my fault. But that's not required. No.
No.
It's good table it if you want to lighten their absence. I might not decline to do that, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Come back to your question about that little triangle property. It looks like Doug Samson's owns it. I think when a lot of these developments happened, he kind of kept property. So he has access to his property. I'm wondering if that's a leftover piece that he had.
You can see the same thing on the other side of, other side of Roger Canyon Road, where there are narrow, even the three narrow right of way to go to Roger Canyon Road from the property from Warren Life Stock.
It was a close remain zone.
Yes.
Because that's what they were.
Well, they're all zoned a-hay on the other side.
Yeah. And remember, when we did the original zoning, it was basically what the assessor was taxing it as, as far as we know. So that was probably taxed as ag because it was part of, maybe the city parcel was Warren Life Stocks at one point or whatever. Yeah, I guess I can't tell you exactly what happened, but can make a few assumptions.
I just wondered if there was some story there. That seemed like the obvious answer that was just, it was part of a bigger piece.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had. Mr. Thine, have you got any questions, comments on this application before we proceed to public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I do not after a meeting.
Good, thank you. We would call for public comments. Seeing no public, I guess there. There were some comments. Oh, Laura.
Hey.
Hey, sorry to join you all late. I definitely underestimated how bad Yellowstone traffic is.
But it used to be we'd go up there from Belle after, after the main season and it had to ourselves, but that time has long gone.
You gotta go out in the rain to get it to yourself now.
Right. Okay, we are in the midst of looking at the Flutie zoning change application. Did you have any, any thoughts you wanted to share when you saw that?
Um, no, no, I, that looked pretty straightforward to me. Thanks.
Okay. Absent public comments, we're back to what's the commission's pleasure on this for the discussion. So we want to make the motion.
Chairman, our clear approval of the Flutie zoning change application, how you see that away, that's twenty two, the board of county commissioners have opted to incorporate the staff analysis, finds a fact, conclusions of all, is the interesting step forward.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? And we understand that there would be those adjustments made in the staff report that we talked about. Yep. Okay. Seeing no further discussion of Mr. Kennedy. Aye. Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Aye.
Pratt?
Aye.
If you please, both ayes. Janice and.
Who seconded that? I did.
I follow. Okay. Current tying projects. First up is the zoning resolution amendments. They've been out first, the statutory 30 day review period. Have we received any comments?
No comments.
Okay, let's formally declare a public hearing open. Let's do this by motion, a motion to open a hearing on the zoning resolution. Ben.
Sumoed.
Second, I second. Discussion of the motion. If they ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, we are now open to public comment. Absent, oh, you have Bonnie, Ms. Bath, I should say. Would you like to comment on the zoning resolution amendments? It's that. Apparently not. What's going twice? I have a motion to close the public hearing on the zoning resolution amendments as posted for public review last. I move to close. Second?
Second.
You're going to be second?
Am I on?
I hear you now.
Oh, I was going to say I had no comments. Thank you.
We took your silence as no comment.
Yeah, okay. Computer trouble.
There you go. All right, the motion is close to public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussion. The markup as distributed. Does he, does he? Well, I guess let others speak first. Are there commission comments, suggestions, quarrels? Thoughts on this, please?
On, for ease of reference, on page 46, I actually put everything together in one PDF. So.
PDF, page 46.
It would actually be under initiation of a zoning district amendment. And it says there that it may be initiated at the request of the board of county commissioners, planning and zoning mission, planning staff for a private entity. And then in the next paragraph, it indicates that the applicant and property owner has to submit the application.
Well, just.
Yeah, that would be section five zoning district amendment.
It's page 12 of just the zoning resolution. Bring that up as a share screen. Sure. I've got to get on.
Yeah, Matt, take a look and see if there's a conflict between those two paragraphs.
I couldn't find you that quickly, so let's, let's see it on the screen. I think it's section five, paragraph C. Yeah, it is. So I'm not in the Zoom meeting yet, so give me just a second. All right. I will be wanting to share screen with other stuff, so let's get it figured out.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Mr. Kennedy. At least the version I'm looking at that was included in the packet, it reads initiation of a zoning change, as you said, and then applicant's mission. It says applicants and property owners or agent authorized by the property must complete, sign and submit to the planning office an application on a form described by the planning director for a zoning district amendment. I would. Applicants and property owners. I think that it would, to clear up that and just make it a little cleaner, we could strike the property owners.
I, I would have a problem with that. I actually would. I, I would, I would like an example of when it would be proper for the board, the board or this commission or staff to initiate zoning change absent the permission of the property.
I like, I would respond to that. Again, I'd like to see exactly what we're talking about here, but I have thought that we might want to do that with respect to these scattered rural residential pieces that have been zoned rural residential for no other reason than at the time the flag went down or just less than 35 acres. So I'm looking down to the future. There may be a time when we would want to, obviously, that the home, the property owner would have to either concur. We have to have that discussion, but I can contemplate a time as we move forward with zoning in the county, that the county might want to initiate a zoning change. And the growth area management plan, just got lots of that built.
I could certainly see that the government entity might want to initiate it, but I'd be real uncomfortable taking property owner out of C, given where that's at. Because. C, given where that's at, because essentially somebody has that, that right as being so rural residential. Absent their permission, I don't think that's proper at all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not tracking the exact words. So what PDF page are you on, Mr. Kennedy?
Bernie's.
Which one are you on? Are you on the full packet?
I'm on the full packet.
I thought it was, what did you refer to?
I hate forty-six is what I came up with, full packet.
It's section, down in section five, C.
It's section five.
Five zoning, go down to paragraph C.
Yeah, yeah, with the, the question isn't the, the initiation paragraph, but the
and, and given that.
Application submission paragraph is, I believe, what.
Hey, Ben, are you on still?
Yes.
Can you make me a co-host, the day, so I can share my screen?
Okay, so, so how would we suggest accommodating, like, certain that we do, us give ourselves the ability to initiate what's the change?
Having read through and recognizing the and in C, we could initiate, but we can't move forward without the property owner's permission. Is that the way you would read that, Matt?
No.
The way it reads with as, as for the suggested amendment.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that, as the language we're talking about right now, it's part of the amendment language. This has been longstanding. Yeah. Our, sorry, Mr. Kennedy, I would agree with your reading of that, that applicants and property owners or the agent of the property owner must sign and submit the planning office. However, I do not believe that you need the consent of the property owner to initiate the zoning change. That is a decision that is entirely within the legislative purview of the Board of County Commissioners. There's longstanding case law from the Wyoming Supreme Court to support that. And furthermore, if we just go back to the very beginning, when we, when in nineteen ninety-six, after our Albany County's sort of flexible land management strategy was founded valid by the Wyoming Supreme Court, and we implemented a more traditional Euclidean zoning model with districts in which certain uses are allowed. And we did, in fact, assign districts to every parcel throughout Albany County. We did not have the permission of every single landowner.
Sure.
Obviously, I cannot think of an example when anyone but a property owner has approached this commission or the county commissioners in the past, but and I think that if we removed that and property owners, the property owner would qualify as an applicant. And further, there's a provision in eighteen five two oh two, eighteen five two oh two B, where the planning and zoning commissioner may prepare and amend a conference plan, including zoning, for the promotion of public health, safety, welfare, morals and general welfare of the county. And that's essentially the enabling statute for setting up the zoning procedurally. And then it also, there's the provision that any person may petition the planning and zoning commission to amend any zoning plan adopted under the provisions of eighteen five two oh one through two oh eight.
Thank you. I guess now as I'm reading that much more carefully, the way it reads to me is the applicant and the property owner have to complete, sign and submit. So what we're seeing is if the applicant is someone other than the property owner, we would let the application go forward.
Sure.
So the C is, I guess, I think it does need amendment.
And I would just recommend.
Strike the first end and make it an or. Do that, yeah.
I would recommend just striking striking property and property owners, it's in, in its entirety. I'm just saying applicants or an agent authorized by the property owner.
So we agree applicant or an agent authorized by the property owner must complete, sign and submit. So you accomplish the end essentially by striking those words.
Yeah, well, yeah, and in that matter, just we, I mean, agency, I think, an agent would be allowed to submit an application without us specifying it just under
Yeah.
pretty fundamental principles. So you could just strike applicants must or everything up to must.
Oh, okay. We don't have a suggested amendment on the table at the moment. Just probably discussing that, Mr. Kennedy.
I gotta erase myself. I can't erase what I just.
Oh, no, good. No, I think this is for second discussion. Isn't the need is to strike out now, but.
Using what I know what to do.
Look up here. Do you have a comment on my suggestion, you know, besides opposing?
No, I don't have any comment on that.
Okay, well, we have a thought floating around. Would someone like to make the motion one way or the other, of either following up on your initial suggestion, Mr. Kennedy, or someone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move the way adopt Sayers' recommendation, if you strike from and all the way through owners in the end must complete.
In that, in that fashion. That's coherent. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you. Okay, we're discussing the proposition of striking, can, can Ms. Hanning and Mr. Stein, can you see the screen that we're looking at?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, then we won't need to describe it. Okay, discussion of that motion? Hearing none, let's take a vote on the proposed amendment. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Stein?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, amendment passes. Now, before we lose counsel, I would suggest this does not count as a substantive change and it kind of modifies general understanding, but you go along with that.
I would agree that this is not substantive.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments on the suggested overall amendment to the zoning resolution?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I have a, will have a question for Matt. So under signage, it says, the signage shall state that the parcel is being proposed for a zoning district amendment and shall give contact information for the, for the planning department. Do, does it have to say, I mean, can we change that to the, the sign shall state that there's a development review or something? I'm just thinking of our existing, our existing signs, right? So, okay, so the sign shall state that the parcel is being proposed for a zoning district amendment and shall give contact. Can we leave it like that and just use our existing signs and say a development review? Or do we have to have a sign that says, I don't want to make a bunch more signs, is what I'm thinking. And this is probably similar to what the language is already in there. So do we need to change this or?
I suppose the, the issue with if it states whether it's for a development review. We, the, you know, kind of the whole point of these amendments was to separate a zoning change from development. So I think that that would be misleading, because technically, when you submit a zoning or an application for a zoning district amendment, the development isn't being considered. That would be at a later date.
Okay, that just sucks because these things are expensive, like, you know, so.
Are, are others sympathetic to Mr. Gerch's, or Simone's use of county funds?
I'm sympathetic. I'm sympathetic to spending food on signs when, when, if the reg stated clearly, I, I don't think a citizen is going to get that confused by a sign. I mean, the, the sign just gets your interest and gets you calling the planning office. And then the planning staff can explain to that person what, what's going on. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to spending more money on different signs and then planning staff having to keep track of which sign goes, goes where. So I'm, I'm with you, David.
I totally agree with Ms. Hanning's comment. And is there an amendment to our language necessary to accomplish that? What, what, what were you suggesting, Mr. Gerch, that would be changed?
Um. I don't think I thought that for.
It may be that this can be accommodated under a.
It could say that the, the sign shall state a proposal or.
Or just say what the sign says.
I mean, there's a proposal for the parcel.
You could say the sign shall state the parcel is being proposed for zoning district amendment or development proposal, and that includes what we're already have on there. You don't like that?
I don't like that. I mean, it already said zoning district change before, under the regulatory language.
Take over the side, the part about development proposal. Do, is that all it would take is just to blank that part of your site out? But that's what the sign looks like.
Says, um.
Big yellow sign for information.
Big heavy metal sign.
I'm just, I'm, we just bought like ten of these things, like.
We just went a couple years ago.
It seems like we do a lot of zoning changes. There's only district amendments or what we're calling that, so.
Yeah.
I will say that on an unrelated note, just for continuity, and I, my apologies for missing this, but could we change department to office and department to office? Because I believe.
Oh, were we? Oh, so higher up than.
Who are you guys?
This says office here.
It says office earlier up under application submission.
I was thinking we were changing a mall from office to department, but.
Yeah, that's, no, you're right, we were. Well, is that something we could just like approve an amendment? Yeah, I mean, that's not substantive at all, so we could just go through and pick all the offices or departments.
We should probably get new signs, because the sign says planning office. The signs, you could certainly get a piece of metal that says zoning, that's the right size, and it can be riveted on the side and removed as necessary by new signs. But, but I, I'm with Mr. Harris that a zoning change is something different. That's the whole point of this amendment. I don't disagree. Is there anyone on the board who would amend the zoning language to accommodate a sign that says development proposal? Hearing none. Next comment?
Others, should we deal with what was just mentioned about department office?
Oh, I, I think we can simply by consensus agree that that's a, an editorial change, like a grammar thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to perceive that that is.
Okay.
Grammar will change.
Office to department.
Whatever's the right thing. Regina? Other questions? I have a couple to get to be. This is yours.
Well, hey, for the sake of clarity, let's kind of wave that and go through in order from start from the beginning to the end. Because I hit one on the next, I'll hit him down, but if there's anything before, for clarity for, yes, I think it's good to go through front to back.
Okay, let's all leave, wait, one of my comments is just how this thing goes forward. I'm anticipating we will certify it today to the Board of County Commissioners and that they will put it up for, for review. The copy I'm seeing has multicolors in it, so we would, we would get rid of that, right?
What I'd probably do is.
Take a clean red, red line strikeout.
Yeah, probably just take a clean, a clean document and then we put in the changes, so.
Okay, and then we'll just manually color it red.
Yeah, it'll all be the same color. Or, I would just do, just strike, you know, track changes and then do, do what it's supposed to do.
Okay, well, let's just, so it's not ambiguous, just what exactly is being proposed. And the, the asterisks, maybe there's a note, that no changes through this section, I'm just wanting to make sure that as this goes out to public comment again, it's crystal clear what exactly it is.
Right.
Yeah.
We can, we can take care of that.
Okay, and then I didn't have a comment until findings necessary for approval, so let's take Commissioner Kennedy's suggestion.
And this is more in a way of a question. Read the first two sentences of F there where it says, Board of the County Commissioners review and action. We were just there. It almost seems that that second sentence is redundant. Somebody clarify for me that I'm not just seeing things. And so I would move to strike that second sentence, because it, it doesn't add anything to the language that as we proposed it.
I agree. Yeah, it pretty much says the same thing twice. I agree. So moved, second, second. As I refer to the discussion of making the suggestion from, or accepting the motion of Commissioner Kennedy, that we just strike that sense. I think, appreciate the careful reading, good idea. Discussion of the motion, hearing done. All in favor say aye.
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 Sorry. I saw a smile like coming across the.
Thing is, I said no.
Any opposed? Hearing that, motion carries. Okay, so let's proceed through, are there other comments up to this point in the document? And going forward, who has got next? I have a question on this page. If you'll recall, we, we looked at number three and, and tabled it basically at our last meeting. My concern was that it, it seemed to require us to move forward with a zoning district amendment in response to a change in the environment surrounding the parcel. It seemed to be that we don't want to, to lock ourselves into having to have a reason. For example, we just did a zoning change for, for the Flutie proposition, and we certainly didn't connect it to any change in the environment surrounding the parcel, public interest or community needs. We just did it because they asked us to, and we thought it was a reasonable request. So my suggestion was to delete number three. Now, I think, Mr. Harris, you're the author of that. Did, did you feel that it added something important to our process without adding a potential hook to our process?
Well, so I, I originally am looking through other counties zoning resolutions and looking at their zoning amendment processes. I found this from Natrona County, if I remember. I found this from Natrona County, if I remember correctly. And since I liked, I just, I thought it was a good idea of asking, still asking a why is this necessary for the county? I mean, asking them, how does this improve the health, safety, welfare and general morals of the county? Without asking them about the development essentially. You know, what, what has occurred in the area or the, I guess, the needs of the citizenry that this will further or that this will address and help with? So that was my thought. I, you know, I'm certainly not married to it. It was just something that I, I wanted to bring to this commission.
Thank you. Actually, I, I think it is slightly disingenuous in that, in fact, we accept zoning amendments. Or, and I would just say, no better reason to trivialize the very good reason that that's property owner wants to do. But, but we're doing all of this under that general rubric of authority of the county to zone for the health, welfare, safety, morals of the county. That's my thinking about it. Other thoughts on whether this clause adds
In fact, that will impact what Commissioner Kennedy said. Hey. Taking our, when people come forward and ask me for
I, I Chair, are we looking to make motions if there's some agreement of the board? I, yes, Mr. Harris, please.
Well, instead of that, it could be a requirement of how the proposed zoning district amendment will further the health, safety. Because all of those below go directly to that. Okay.
I move to strike that. Second. Motion to make to strike item three. That's received a second. Is there further discussion from commissioners? Hearing none. Let's do a little call on this. Mr. Kennedy, aye. Sitting.
Nay.
Mr. Platt, aye. Scott.
Aye.
Nickley, aye. I count four, aye, one, nay, and amendment carries. Thank you.
And that was all I had. So yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so can I move back up to number two?
I, that's where my question.
Okay, so it says proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Conference of Plan, blah, blah, blah. I've always not really liked the generally follows suggestions of, can we just change it to the proposed zoning district considers the recommendations of the Albany County Conference of Plan, blah, blah, blah?
I would shoot that question to defer to you. Because I'm, I'm thinking of asphalt specialties and should, should that even be mentioned in there?
Um, so, I mean, this is a conversation I've been having for over a year now. And I think that this, having it in like making it follow the conference plan is defensible for the purpose of zoning change and zoning budget. Because we have through this process or through these amendments divorced the the development from, or the development or land use from the zoning district amendment. And that's obviously the, well, maybe not the entire, but almost the entire purpose of a comprehensive plan is to lay out what the future zoning of the, of the county is to look like. So, and just reading 185201A, no Board of County Commissioners shall require that a land use or physical development be consistent with the local land use plan unless the applicable provisions have been incorporated into the local zoning regulations. A zoning district amendment is neither a development nor a specific land use. It allows for specific developments and land uses. But this is simply just the zoning.
I would amplify that. This paragraph is basically what this entire exercise is about. And as respect to asphalt specialties and the subsequent state statute derivative therefrom, it was all about you're not allowed to tell people what they can do based on a comp plan. But it's perfectly clear and is absolutely standard zoning practice and is explicitly authorized by state statute that you are authorized to develop a comp plan and zoning pertinent there too. I suspect Mr. Harris could put these figures on the exact words. But in the statute, it authorizes the county to do plans and to do zoning flowing from those plans. And that's absolutely what standard practice has been for evidence why you do comprehensive plans. So it is, it is absolutely critical for the concept that we've been working on for a year. And the reason we're doing that is because we want to address asphalt specialties and the change in the state law. And we very carefully parsed the state law as Mr. Harris just lined out for us between approving a specific proposal, which is like a subdivision or a gravel bed. That's a very different thing than the zoning, which approves a zoning district, which can accommodate a great bright abuses, which then can come forward within the parameters of that zoning district and make their proposals for a specific physical development. So it absolutely needs to say this, in my opinion. That's, that's why we're here. And we could argue about generally follow versus considers. Generally follows are the words that have been in the statute, our regulation for decades. I don't know where those came from originally.
That actually came from when we updated the zoning in 2015.
Okay, so those, those, we're not suggesting to change those. Rather, we were suggesting that we would wrap the modifications of the whole package around the provisions of state law and case law for a couple of years. So that's my two bits for thought. That is, are there other thoughts on that or would someone like to offer an explicit amendment?
It seems to me generally follows a considerer. Right, I was just shortening, I don't know. I like considers better. I mean, I think that's term that, you know, it's like you're going to consider what's in the comp plan. What you do with it is kind of up to you, but like, we should look at it. We should use it to think about things and then go for, I mean, it generally follows the suggestions. That it's just a lot of verbiage that just doesn't, I mean, if you want it, if you want it to be more if we want to make it part of the decision, we need, it needs to say like, needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Consistency is the terminology that's used for this all over. I mean, in some states, you have to be consistent with comprehensive plan when you consider these things. But consider, considers, I think, is a little bit, it's not as burdened. But I don't know. I just don't like this language, but I'm totally fine with it as well, so.
I'm interested in Matt's thoughts here.
Yeah, I would say that probably considers would be the softest kind of requirement. Generally follows somewhere in the, would be intermediate and is consistent with would be the most affirmative requirement. So I would be completely fine with is consistent with the suggestions of the comprehensive plan. And that is also, I have done a deep dive into other counties throughout the state, and that is exactly what their requirements for these zoning district amendments are. Even in some of the, the more firm counties throughout the state.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your taxonomy and I completely agree with it in terms of how attached we are. I'm comfortable with the language in the existing statute. Because it does provide a certain amount of wiggle room. The comprehensive plan is done and it may not be updated for years. And we don't need to follow it chapter and verse. We definitely should consider it and we want to consider it. We want to generally follow it. Of the three points on your spectrum, I'm most comfortable with the middle one myself. Mr. Harris?
Also, under Wyoming case law, the Wyoming Supreme Court has affirmatively or has they didn't explicitly adopt the rule, but they have positively endorsed the rule that counties, counties are not required to follow the provisions of a local land use plan and can actually act counter to what that plan suggests. And just thinking about, yeah, I mean, all the conference plan is due for update. But even under its own terms, so I, I agree with what Mr. Hinkley is saying, but that does allow a little bit more discretion.
Other thoughts on paragraph two? If no one's got a motion to make, we can move on. Going once, going twice. Okay, that's a few extra words. Trust our planning staff to find their way through those. Next comment? Anybody on this page? Next page. I'm trying to rush things here, but let's just move along. Are you, are you tracking with us, Ms. Hanning, Mr. Thack?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
I'll miss that one. Mara looks like she's on board.
Sorry, Mr. Thack, we can't hear you.
Ah, sorry, yeah, I, I was following along.
Yeah, I, I see everything on my laptop and on the screen here, so I'm, I'm, I'm following and can see what you're talking about.
Let's just move on through Mr. Gerch and somebody holler if you have a spot where you want to make an adjustment. Mr. Kennedy, you had looked at it with some critical eye to your credit.
I do not have any more comments.
Okay, well, then maybe we could, does anyone else have any more comments? Okay, hearing none. We're at the point of, are we prepared to certify this to the Board of County Commission by way of a recommendation that they proceed with implementation? Mr. Harris, did you have any other thoughts you wanted to share? Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your good work over the, we've been at this about a year on this, so thank you for that. Is there a motion? Chair and I move to certify as a recommended approval of the county commissioner of this change. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kennedy. Further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Ms. Hanning?
Aye.
What? Aye. Mr. Thack?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. And again, thanks for your good work. And that moves us.
Really tight, so I can take off.
I'm sorry, Ms. Beth, we're not hearing you if you're trying to talk to us. Bonnie?
Hello?
Hello?
I think I'm on Zoom. I think they're hearing.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not getting instructions otherwise. We will move on to item seven on our agenda. Which is Gas Bar for Protection Update Discussion. So let me, I've been pretty heavily involved in that over the last few weeks. Let me, let me offer a few comments to get us started. Where, where are we? There's a Joint City-City Steering Committee that is basically running the show on the Gas Bar Protection Plan update. That consists of County Commissioner Ibarra and City Councilors Sharon Comby, Arnold Doherty and Pat Gabriel. And there are co-managers of the consultant contract, correct me if I'm stating this, Mr. Gerch. And that is our planning director, Mr. Gerch, and the city I wouldn't say counterpart, but Mr. Darren Parton. National Resource Specialist, I think is his title. Stan Tech is the consulting firm that was hired to, to put together a recommended Gas Bar Protection Update and update of the respective ordinances and resolutions. This is county and the city. They circulated the August 19 draft. It is currently out for a 45-day public view comment under their offices. They've had, they're, they're accepting comments through public meetings. There are three of those. Two have been held now and the third one is scheduled for the 5th of October. They're also accepting comments from the public by a comment form that's posted on the county website, email. I'm giving them a markup of a Word document, comments on PDFs. They're quite accommodating in the form of the comments. So that's where we are now. We're in that 45-day period. This quick update, Mr. Gerch, have we received anything beyond the input from that first public meeting? Was there something that came up last night?
Um, there was, who was at the meeting? Mr. Paul Taylor.
Oh, they were the Australian gentleman.
Yes.
Okay, he's distinctive by his accent.
Yes, I'm not sure if he brought up anything.
He had a couple of comments, but they weren't. I don't remember. Okay, so, and on the form written stuff, are we seeing anything?
No, we've not received anything.
I attended the first meeting and offered extensive suggestions by way of rearrangements and expansions and so forth that seem to be generally well received. Where we're going on the official track, there's a joint meeting between the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission, the Environmental Advisory Commission, which is the joint city-county operation, and the City Planning Commission scheduled for the 21st, 6 o'clock. I think you've all been made aware of that. That's a discussion meeting. The steering committee has been concerned that none of the three commissions take formal action by way of amendments or recommendations pending us all getting together. They're being quite protective of this cooperative relationship between the city and the county as we look forward. At the same time, we do need to move forward. So there's been some kind of a cross currents in our instructions. One is to get this thing done this year and the others, don't talk, don't talk about it. So I think that logjam has been broken. I talked to Mr. Stacy, who's running the show for Stan Tech, and he is ready and willing to accept comments as they come in. So they're not waiting till the end to turn it around. Our goal, of course, is then to have a revised draft for the second, this will be the third meeting of the three commissions. Possibly as early as mid-October, possibly somewhat later, at which point we would have enough of a document that we could at least have the possibility of approving amendments and certifying it forward. Again, I'm somewhat skeptical of that, but we'd like to do all we can to help make that happen. In that spirit, it has been suggested that we divide the cap from the regulations. And Mr. Harris has done some work in terms of the approval processes for those two distinct pieces. We talked this a little bit at our last meeting of doing the two pieces sequentially, which would be the normal order of events. That was Mr. Gerch's preference. Certainly Mayor Weaver. Certainly Mayor Weaver at Commission Chair, Bill Sarr, would prefer that we do those in parallel, allowing at least the possibility that they could be finished at the same time. Now, any, any further feedback from Mr. Gurch, Mr. Harris on, on the procedure going forward? Are we going to split these into, if we got any feedback on the different timelines that have been suggested? Do you have to talk to us a little bit about the formal procedures going forward? Regulations versus land use plans?
Yeah, I suppose, just so, this commission is, is aware, the local, the land use plan itself, which is the CAP, has different procedural timelines than the regulations. It's 30 days before planning and zoning, or sorry, it's notice of a public hearing and then 30 days for that public hearing before planning and zoning, and then 14 for the board. But if we were to go forward with the regulations, it would still be the same timeline for planning and zoning, but then that would implicate the Administrative Procedure Act for the Board of County Commissioners and take their 14 days, turn that into 45. So that's, that's just the distinction there, which would make it a little bit harder to get the regulations adopted at the same exact time as the CAP, but.
Unless we delay review of the CAP or the County Commission chose to put them both out for 45 days, should run them side by side, I, my, my impression is that they're disinclined to do that. And we don't, we're not deciding anything about that tonight, but just so you're aware of how this is going to proceed. We're going to get a revised draft back from STANTEC and then the commissions will be invited to amend that as we think appropriate before we do our respective jobs of certifying it forward to the County Commission, City Council. Mr. Gurch?
Yeah, first off, I want to apologize for all the meetings that are being called. I'm kind of in the middle of this and I'm just passing on the word, so. Well, I am too, so it's like, but I'm, you know, I'm working with the team that's trying to get this done, so. So I didn't, I, I received confirmation from three of you whether you may or may not be able to come to the meeting on the 21st, because we do have a meeting on the 22nd. I don't know, were you going to be able to make the 21st meeting next Wednesday?
I didn't receive anything that I understood in response to.
I did.
Oh, really?
I could be there though. Okay.
My spam filter caught it, but.
Really? Okay. Yeah, the county email works with some people and other people.
It usually works.
I, I got a message. So let's, let's ask that, are the, are the members attending today, are you understanding you've been invited to a joint meeting on the 21st?
I understand it now, I got that.
Mr. Thine?
I do. And I do.
Okay. Ms. Hanning?
Did I already respond in the affirmative? I might be getting my. The growth, the growth plan is the 24th, right?
22nd.
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 The 21st is the cap.
Okay, I, I can, I can make the meetings, I don't have my planner in front of me, but I'm, I'm pretty sure there are no Yellowstone field trips there.
You confirmed already that you could, so thank you.
Good, okay.
Yeah, so, and just to, to go on from that, I don't know if our city counterparts are going to make the meeting yet or not, they're still trying to figure that out, so it's not actually a firm date. So just wait for further, I mean, save the date, right? Once I hear, I will let everybody know, so.
Okay, what's firm date? 21st is firm?
The 22nd is firm, the 21st is not.
Okay, it's what time, where?
Do you want to meet here on the 21st? The 22nd is.
Is the Growth Area Management Plan.
Yeah.
But isn't it a working set or work session?
Yeah, it's a work session.
And it's not this entire board or commission?
It's this group, it's the E, no, this other one is planning and zoning and one night's planning and zoning and planning commission, the other night is planning, zoning, planning commission and EAC. That's the 21st.
Just said is the 21st, that's the cap, that's the subject in front of us. And that's the joint?
Yeah.
But then for the Growth Area Management Plan, the next night?
That's, that's planning, zoning and planning commission.
Oh, is it? If that's going to be here, what time?
4 o'clock. Now, I haven't confirmed that we can use this room either, so I guess I'll need to do that as well, so.
Okay. Okay.
Note to self. Not to self.
Exactly. Confirm we need to do notice. All right, so stay tuned for those meetings. And we'll have those, it's, it's going to be a take action, approve anything. There are opportunities for discussion. The first one, I would argue, is the more pressing because we are trying to move forward to an approvable Opera Protection Plan update and ordinance, Growth Area Management Plan. I don't know what timeline that is on, but I've heard nobody suggested that was going to get done.
It was on the same timeline as it was the cap, but I'm thinking that that may change, so. This is just, yeah, you can't be doing both these things.
But let's focus on the subject at hand, which is cap.
Yep.
So what, what can be done by way of members of this commission helping to move that forward would be to get engaged between now and then. Now, this is, we all have our own schedules to juggle, we've got plenty of meetings to go to, but if you are inclined to make comments on the current version of the cap or regulations, sooner would be more useful than better and that it would give the consultant time to absorb those comments, perhaps come back to us in October with a revised version of CAP and that ordinance. Now, the, the pitch that I was making at the public meeting would pitch to, to you, my colleagues, is that the, the cap is a resource document, the primary goal of the update is to bring all the science developments since 2008 up to speed. It includes the, the science, as I would call it, the, it's currently organized as the delineation boundaries, but I've encouraged STANTEC to separate it out into hydrogeology. Once we get that laid out, then we use that science to do the delineations. It includes an update on the potential cadaver source inventory, includes educational levers and materials and various management strategies like pilot hills, the cap covers quite a bit of territory. So, and as you would expect, those of us that have been involved in this and are by professions engaged in this group, that would certainly include Mr. Thine and Ms. Hanning, but if any of you have questions or comments relative to any of those technical issues, don't, don't be shy about coming forward. Here's a chance to make that cap be the resource document for the county. So if, if, if you've heard that enhanced septic tanks cost $60,000 apiece, kick that comment back to STANTEC and let's have them give us feedback on that. There have been cross-sections circulated around that suggest septic tank effluent all simply evaporates into the breezes. As it's a technical matter, that's incorrect, but this cap update is an opportunity to have our, our consultants, scientists, tell us how septic tanks work and where that effluent goes. So anything that you have run across over your interchange with, with the folks or it come to your own mind in terms of a question you have of a, of a technical scientific nature, you don't need a suggestion for how STANTEC should address that, which you're more than welcome to ask them to do that. And if all of us do that, it will, we'll end up with a better document and something that perhaps lays to rest some of the factual disputes, allowing us to then proceed to think critically about appropriate regulations. So I've given them a bunch of suggestions and modifications on the technical side. Okay. So, so please do that, and again, don't be shy that, oh, I don't understand this, if there's something that you think would be useful as a public document, send that comment off to, to STANTEC and sooner rather than later. Now, one of several of the management strategies is regulation, and that's of course where the thing gets savages and we're talking about spending people's time and money, what you can and can't do with your own property. So obviously, we are going to have to look very, very carefully at the resolution that flows out of this land use plan. It's very like the, the difference between the comp plan and zoning, which is where the teeth are and the law requires the teeth be in an explicit resolution in our case. So certainly look those regulations, oh, regulations over very carefully. The consultant has offered a lot of ideas, but their perspective is limited. And what we will bring to the table that they don't have is, is the appreciation for the balance of economic development, housing goals, private property rights, those just aren't things that, that our consultants is, is balanced. So I think our goal is somewhat different than the consultant updating CAP. When we get to those ordinances, it's up to us to, those are fundamentally political decisions. That's where we elected officials and we elected and appointed officials come in. What do we want to recommend to the County Commission? And at some point, we will be taking a formal vote on the resolution that, that comes out of this cap update. Right now, the, the regulatory guts that are at the table of critical uses and the requirements for what they're calling site-specific investigations, SSIs, and we'll see a bunch of recommendations from our consultants on those. Following up on Commissioner Kennedy's suggestion, I think we'll want to see those in conventional red line strikeout form. I think, Mr. Gurch, you said that, that, that's going to happen. So for that October meeting, we will see suggested changes to our current APOZ resolution in amendment form. We all want, I'll track that way.
That's, I don't know when that was supposed to be done, but I know that they're working on that document.
Okay, I mean, that, yeah, so to extend, you're a co-manager of those guys, I thought it was a good suggestion for Commissioner Kennedy and ultimately, it has to be done that way because we're going to present it to the public as a amendment to the APOZ regulations. So I've got a variety of things that I've been working on, let me throw it out to the group. Are there, are there things that, that you would like to discuss with your colleagues since we're all here? Things you'd like to direct our attention to as we're all thinking of, of how to, how to respond to these drafts that we're getting from our, so.
I would, Mr. Plath? Just like to have a general sense of how my fellow commissioners feel about the document. If they truly find it good or problematic or what?
My, my biggest area of concern is that the lines follow legal boundaries rather than the delineation that STANTEC has made as to where they believe the boundary is of the this tanka. Because it's clearly delineated on there based on the data that's been developed since the previous plan, where they believe it makes sense that, that that line should be. And that's probably my biggest area of concern. And the largest area is certainly up to the north where it incorporates, there are some fairly large areas there that are incorporated into the zone that is west of where they have put that delineation on the map. And I, I realize that that is not, that it's not a surveyed line. But I also think that if, if STANTEC feels that there's that much certainty as to where that is, that, that that places a burden on those who have property to the west of that line.
Okay, we're, we're talking about the difference between the so-called 75-foot line and the APOZ line?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Gurch, I think you've been a big promoter of following survey lines, can you respond to that latter point of view?
Well, I, before he, I, I understand the planner's point of view where it can be that clearly delineated or it is. The other side of that to me is that if STANTEC does have that certainty, GIS allows us to draw that line with certainty so that any given point on that map can be located arially and decide whether it's east or west of that line.
So the problem with using GIS information is it's not survey information. It, you can't use it in a court of law to determine where things are. It's just, it has to be surveyed. And so that's, that's my, my big push is to have something that's surveyed. I mean, they did look at surveying that line at one point, but I think it was just the cost slash astronomical, you know, the original line. I mean, I, I honestly think that the next best option is what STANTEC is trying to do is where it's like choosing property lines. And so it's not like, it's not following that, you know, 75-foot boundary exactly, but it is much more confined to where they think that line is.
And I would add the thought that we don't need to, some things don't matter at the detail that it's expensive to acquire. And certainly, any one affected by this as well could come forward and survey a line and make the argument that the APOZ should be conformed to that line. So it seems to me there is a, a safety net to, to your point, Commissioner Kennedy, that that if too much of your property is included through the amendment process, you can come in, get the APOZ modified for your property based on a survey that, that you spring forward because it's of interest to you for that piece.
And I guess that begs the question then, would, would such a survey now be accepted as a change to the, to this proposal?
One of the suggestions I made to him was to be very clear about how this zoning reservation, the, I guess it's the zoning reservations, the Opera Protection Plan Zone could be amended. And, and one of my comments on it to respond to, Mr. Plath, was I think we, the way they've written this about drilling wells is, is unnecessary and an unnecessary expense. And I've suggested that they move that whole discussion into an amendment process where we would in our regulation say, if you don't like the current boundary of the APOZ, here's what you need to do to approve. Better spot. And I would include for potentially drilling a well, all the language that they have in there about, about how you would nail down exactly what the 75-foot line is. I'd have to do that all the way over to an amendment process rather than requiring it if anybody wants to do it aside. Ms. Hanning, you have your hand up. You're muted, Mara, can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, I guess I, I found this to be an interesting conversation in the STANTEC presentation because I was initially, you know, my, the notes I took when I reviewed this, I thought, is changing it from the line to the, to the parcel gonna, gonna fly? And but what STANTEC talked about with the history of the cap was that at one time it was done on section lines. I mean, so if you think about it, we have this, we went from section lines, which was a, a pretty gross generalization of where the boundary could be, to our best attempt at seeing where the boundary was. And sometimes that would cut through the middle of a parcel and create extra work for a property owner to have to do an SSI on that part of the parcel. And so, so, so that other end of the spectrum is sort of a complicated thing. And I sort of liked it being around the surveyor, surveyable parcel lines as, as sort of. And I sort of liked it being around the surveyor, surveyable parcel lines as, as sort of meeting it all up. Um, and maybe avoiding all of these expenditures on SSI's. Um, so I, I appreciated sort of where they were, they were kind of bringing it back to, to the middle of, of how you could look at this. Thanks.
Yeah, look, the, I've responded to that. Your history isn't exactly right. The, the original line was drawn back in two thousand. As just a line, sketch on a map. And that was the boundary of the APOC until two thousand eight, when the city. Uh, well, the city and the county. Uh, went about updating the, the APOC. Partway through that process, they, they parted company. And the county continued with the drawn geologic line and the city's line that moved to the section lines. So the status quo coming into the new cap is, is both of those things. There was never a commitment from the county to follow section lines, although that's been the preference of the county planner for the obvious administrability reasons. So, yeah, I, I think your comment's on point. Your history is just slightly more nuanced than that. Um, other thoughts on that? Then we don't, we're not gonna resolve it here. We're not, you know, capacity to do resolution. But I appreciate that that's something that's, that's of concern. So as we're making our comments, as I say, my, my response to that and my suggestion, StanTech, would be that they. They make it as easy as possible to amend the survey line APOC. Other thoughts? What are you seeing that you think we could benefit from hearing? We want to know those views on. And while, while you're thinking about that, I could go ahead a bit. The SSI has caught my attention as in a profession that is called upon to do such things. So I can put my hat on and say to myself, what? Uh, and I think, and I made this pitch to StanTech at their public meeting, uh, that we. Trim the SSI requirements. To those things that are, as I described it, actionable. For example, if you were doing SSI on your property, seeking approval of your development. The suggestion from them was that you have to tell me. If you say that you can drill a well or somehow ascertain how thick the, the zatanka is. But if, if you're in that current APOC and you're not trying to get out of the APOC. There is no rule, the changes based on whether the zatanka is fifty feet thick or sixty-two feet thick. So there's no reason to ask you to go to trouble with telling me. What the thickness is. Similarly, the direction of groundwater flow, we don't have anything in our standards that say. Yes, if the flow is northeast and no flow is, flow is southwest. So why should I require the applicant to tell me that? So I've asked StanTech and would encourage ourselves as we go through this to, to carefully look at each of the requirements that we are placing on the applicant. And we're not sending them off on an interesting science project. We're asking them to deliver information to us. That is directly relevant. To our decision about whether to go forward with their development or not. Because mostly what we have. In the, in the requirements are table of prohibited uses. And setbacks for vulnerable features. So we, at a minimum, we need to ask our applicants to go out and verify the presence of vulnerable features from which then a setback is required. But, but anything else of a more, let's learn about the Casper aquifer, I think is the responsibility of. Of the county or the city or interested individuals, but we should not burden the applicant with that. So just as a general principle, that's, that's one of the things that I'm kind of trying to dig into. To, to get to your point, Mr. Platt. I think that's.
Well, I'm interested.
Responsibility to our applicants.
Uh, I'm interested to hear you say that because I was sort of wondering also about. There's a big sort of crescent shape. Chump of the land where there's not much well data. StanTech wanted everyone who was gonna develop that land to build a well. And I was thinking. Why should they? So I'm not the only one thinking that.
No, no, that's your, where our thoughts are headed in the same direction. Now, if we, if we married that to a requirement. Um. Thou shalt not build X, Y, Z if zatanka is less than twenty feet. Thick, well then, then we need to know whether it's less than twenty feet thick, but we don't have anything over on that other side. Hundred-year floodplain is another one that's discussed at the meeting that I attended and the. That, that can be an expensive proposition because those floodplains have not been defined for us like. FEMA maps floodplains on major streams. But in the suggestions before us, where the, where the applicant can do that for an individual property and that's. This is vastly expensive, but it has got some money attached to it. And it isn't married to a setback from the hundred-year floodplain. So we could either add that requirement or we could stick with the current setback, which is from the drainage center line. So that beginning, that those are the kinds of things that I've been looking at. With respect to us, ultimately coming to what I consider responsible and, and appropriate regulation. Um, other, other thoughts of time, standing? What are you, what are you seeing that's catching your attention? We ought to think about.
Maura, would you like to go first? Oh, me? Uh, well, personally, I'm trying to reconcile, uh, fans that, and that. Their recommendations. I'd kind of like to change your wording there a little bit. They don't get to say. They get to recommend. Unless I misunderstood the process. Right, I mean, they have no.
We're not, we're not hearing you very well. Speak, speak up a little closer to your microphone, baby.
I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood the process. I don't think StanTech has any authority. They're simply consultants making recommendations, exactly.
Absolutely. They, they are making recommendations to us. We will make recommendations to the board of county commissioners.
Right, at this point in time, uh, you know, to get back to the original question. Um, I found their report to be a step up. You, you know, have consolidated a lot of information that's been spread out and I think that's really useful. Right now, I'm trying to reconcile the EAC and StanTech. Because the EAC had a report that was part of this. And I. Think I'll wait and make those comments to them, but you know, basically. They have pointed, the EAC pointed out that a good bit of the zatanka, and I think they're language. I think they meant that they said clearly that Casper, Aquifer, and the zatankage shale are hydraulic. Communication. And. That means there's no barrier. All right. For a sick, a thickness of fifty feet. So apparently we need seventy-five, but it's twenty-five feet. Is enough. To protect rock. I'm just reading from the EAC report that's appended to this StanTech report. So, you know, it's, it's little things, which are not so little, a thing like that, where I really have to take the time to go through this. And try and understand the line. Because everybody's saying, we need seventy-five feet of zatanka. And then here's the EAC saying, yeah, seventy-five feet sounds good. That's a number. And I, and I would question even where they put the dotted line on the cap. Given some of the contouring they did, when you have actual data points. So Commissioner Kennedy's point, I don't know that dotted line. Uh, convincing, I do like the idea that it follows, follows property boundaries. I think seventy-five feet is problematic as being safe. Probably move it to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five. But we see, I, I don't know where seventy-five came from. Two-thirds of that is fractured in hydraulic communication. So I'm just wrestling some. This is thought, you know, and this is purely a technical. So I'll, I'll confine those comments to the technical. People, that it would be appropriate to give.
Yeah, um. This is a, is a, the guts of it is a technical document, so all of that is, is relevant. Just to get a little history on that. By the EAC report, I'm assuming you're talking about the original delineation report done by the, the cast of.
No, I'm talking about reports that's appended.
Back in two thousand or so.
Yeah, it's part of this package and I didn't look at the data.
Is this the one that all the PGs signed? There was like nine of them? At this point, the report you're talking about.
And see. Um, I didn't see all this. I mean, it's not like I said, I, I find it to be. Uh, a positive move forward in terms of this, of providing the public and people ahead of us. In this thing. And yes, you're right. I do see. Technical review subcommittees, um. Yeah, there's. Eight, nine?
Yeah, that, that.
I, you are the only person that I'm surprised is not on this list.
There, there was enough.
Yeah, you're, you're right about that report. So, you know, I'm, I'm going back to seventy-five feet. Got inherited in some place, seventy-five feet of relatively impermeable shale makes sense to me. Twenty-five feet of relatively impervent, uh, permeable shale. Doesn't, but you know, I, this may just be worrying. But that was the first thing when I read through this document, the first thing I went, whoa, wait a minute. Let's back up here. Understand the, the. Fundamental idea, protecting the aquifer, need a certain thickness of fairly impermeable material through there. It's always been seventy-five feet. And apparently fifty is pretty.
Would be an appropriate comment to StanTech to have them look hard at that criteria because they pretty much. Looked at what they saw, and that was a comment I made to them at the, at the meeting I attended was. Uh, hey, you guys, you're, you're the geologists, you're getting paid big bucks. Look carefully at what's been done in the past, and if you like it, say so. And if you don't, then let's talk about it. So, yeah, I think it would be appropriate to encourage them in their technical analysis to, to take a serious and critical look at that report that was done back in two thousand. Let's, let's see what they have to say for themselves.
I don't know why, that's probably way down the weeds, so I don't wanna. I don't wanna, you know. Derail us from knowing that this thing's gonna come up and we'll have conversations and get our.
But let me, let's, getting down the weeds is fully appropriate. That's the state of. The sooner the better.
We still got other things on the agenda, Mark. I'm trying to get through the agenda tonight. You know, score a win and get all the way.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I, I have some thoughts about the document. If, if you're ready for my turn.
Please.
Um. I, I thought there were some improvements and I, and I also felt there were some, some things that concerned me in it. Um, I guess in a, in a general sense, the descrip, the description of the purpose of the document. I found to be a little less clear than our current document. It gets a little convoluted with the concept of development. Um, which I, I don't think is. Is, is an appropriate thing to be mixing into the, the purpose of the document is to protect public water supplies in private wells. Um, it's not to, uh, that's. You know, on its own, a standalone issue, irregardless of what development may or may not be. So I, I was concerned about the interjection of development here and there throughout the document. As being a little bit of a weakening of, of what we're really here to do with the cap. So that was sort of a broad overriding concern I have about the spirit of, of how they're writing some of it. Um. So some other issues that I had, uh, let's see. I, I, I was okay with the delineation of the western boundary, more or less. I, I thought that. You know, they're, they're just taking the data out there and doing what they can to refine that. Um. The contaminant source inventory was, was pretty thorough. Um, sometimes how they looked at how a site might produce contaminants, I thought maybe missed the mark on some of them. Um, but you know, I'll address that in my own comments. Uh, what I really liked in the contingency plan was the emphasis on the county. Contracting for their own first responder. In my experience of managing a spill program in another state. The most significant thing you can do is get somebody out there as fast as you can. To, to dig up or do, do whatever you can in having a couple companies on contract. Uh, to be able to get them to come in an instant. On top of what I know, our, our fire department is very well trained in spill response. Um, but having the equipment come in and deal quickly, I thought was a strong recommendation that they made. That I, I would really like to see the county follow up on. Um. But where, where I have to say I struggled the most was when I got into appendix J. And I really appreciate that Keith is, you know, put. Put the request out for a red line strikeout because I, I think that will really bring things to light, but. Um, I, I found the changes that they're recommending for our zoning resolution to. I, I found them to be weakening of, of the cap. Um, in terms of providing an avenue for. Uh, using engineered solutions to get up close to vulnerable. Um, vulnerable features in the aquifer. Uh, so I, I didn't care for, for that in the appendix J. Um, I, I think that puts the planning department on a slippery slope of constantly having to. Oh, well, I forgot, it said, I forgot, you're gonna get another employee who's gonna do this. That's like sprinkled throughout, right? County's gonna just hire somebody. Um, and, and that, of course, makes me uncomfortable. I would rather have the person that the county has hired. Come forward with how they plan to manage and oversee engineering solutions to allow people to get up close to vulnerable features. It seems to me that we're putting the cart in front of the horse on the top of the hill and giving it a shove. If you allow engineered solutions without oversight. Um, so that, that was a grave concern to me in appendix J. Um, and I guess the other thing that I'd like to see besides. What you've mentioned, um, Burn about, let, let's make this a document that really sums up the data that we know out there. Um, I would like to see a more robust discussion about the fact that properly functioning septic tank leach fields. Do contaminate groundwater. It's not about whether you haven't pumped it out. It, it's about the fact that it is designed to infiltrate into the soil and into the Vados zone. And if it's designed properly, that's exactly where it's supposed to go, down, down, down. And. I feel like there's this misconception that if you get your system pumped every five years. And get it inspected every three years, which by the way is another issue I have, the, the dates, the timing should be the same. If you're gonna inspect your system, do it when you're pumping it. It makes no sense to have a three year and a five year. They, they should be coincident. Whether it's the five year or the three year, I, I'd prefer three for pumping my own self. Um, or if you say every two pumpings, get it inspected. Um, but to have, to have the pumping and the inspection not be concurrent is sort of like, uh, just doesn't make sense to me. Um. But all that discussion about pumping the tanks and inspecting it. Leads one to believe that if you just did that, you'd be protecting the aquifer. And all you're doing with that is preventing. Uh, the effluent from surfacing in your leach field and, you know, having a failing leach field system. So it's, it's meant to, to, uh, keep us from coming in contact with the wastewater at the surface. So I, I feel like that creates more confusion, uh, a little bit. That it makes it seem like, oh, if you just do this, the aquifer will be fine. And, and that's just not even close to true. Um, so I, I'd like to see a more robust discussion of, of the, how the facts of septic tank leach fields. Um, and that they infiltrate wastewater into the Vados zone and eventually into the groundwater. Um. So I guess, I guess, you know. Those, those were sort of the overriding things that struck me. Um. Aside from the fact that. Oh, I guess, you know, I'm all for this collaborative relationship. I, I, I think it's high time that we were working on this. Um, but there's a little piece of me that feels like, um, the county isn't able to express themselves fully. Like we're, we're not being trusted as equal partners, maybe. I, I don't know. Um, but I just even found the description on our county webpage of the process to be a bit city centric. And not, not looking at all of. to be a bit city centric and not, not looking at all of, all of our county private well users out there. Um, so that, that's sort of a, a summation of some of the things that, that caught me. Um, I guess mostly in a negative way, but I, I did like the document. I do think it's an improvement, but they, they can improve it more. Thanks.
Thank you. And, and one of those comments I had made to them in the sense of, if they're following the D E Q Wellhead Protection Guidance Document, it is entirely city centric. Sometime back, I had made a comment to this body that, that the cap was for the city, which is, is absolutely true, but there was quite a strong objection about it. And the suggestion here is that let's make it clear that, that this cap and the company regulations are to protect the quality of groundwater for the city wells as well as all of the shallow domestic wells. And I think that goes to your point. Uh, and, and part of it requires them to step back from that strict Wellhead Protection Guidance Document, which is wrapped around public water supply wells, which is just the city. There, there are a lot of other wells out there that are of equal importance to us. So fair point. As a follow up comment, I'd like to just point out, I mean, I think we all recognize that all the cap is county. Only a small portion is actually city land. Now, it, it occurs to me as we're having this discussion that let us direct STANTEC to the tape of this meeting. This is a public comment. There's, right? There's no reason not to do that, anybody? Okay, I'll, I'll drop, Stacey, a note, say, listen to this tape from timestamp here to here, you'll hear all of this. Not that you're off the hook, if you want to write a comment, do so. Uh, but, uh, yeah, unless somebody feels uncomfortable with that, which we're all being recorded, this is a public meeting. I think this would be a great discussion for, for the STANTEC guys to hear. Mr. Erst, you want to?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, if I could ask, uh, David, do we know our, I suppose, have we made any, um, sort of decision regarding whether the county will be incorporating, uh, appendix J suggested regulations into the cap? Or is that going to be sort of removed?
The decision has not been made. Um, I believe I've talked with, um, Mark Stacey at STANTEC. He was meaningful in doing it, obviously.
Okay.
Um, so, um, I'm kind of in the process. I need to send the, the group, the intergovernmental group that's kind of overseeing this pro, project, an email, like, I don't think anybody's going to care. Uh, I think that would be appropriate and, and that way we can get on the, what would it be, parallel processes? However, there's different, you know, standards for public notice and stuff. So, I mean, that makes sense, so.
I just wanted to comment that in, um, appendix J, under their suggestions for, uh, non-conformant uses, um, all of those regulations would be, uh, in violation of state statute regarding non-conformant uses. Um, if it is non-conformant use, it gets to continue as is unless it changes scope or or the use changes or is abandoned. I know in other states, uh, you can kind of have a legalization period where they have to come into compliance within, uh, certain time period, but under Wyoming statute, that is not, uh, the case.
Yeah, and, uh, I went through the exercise of preparing the body of the draft cap with everything in appendix J is drawn from the, from the capital. So it would support the idea of, was, be allowed in appendix J, it could be a technical memo from our consultant to us on how they think we might want the regulations. And, and nothing would be lost in the process, is what I was, was trying to convince myself of. And I found everything. So I think that would be a good idea of getting it to fly. And then the city, they're basically all the same issues. And thank you, Mr. Erst. Uh, now I did, my comments to them suggest that upfront somewhere, they described the statutes and authorizations under which this land use plan is being developed. And I said that the council for the county would be delighted to help them with that. I hope I didn't overstate that, but I volunteered you to help STANTEC correctly write the authorization under which this land use plan is being developed.
Oh.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I asked them.
So why does they reach out to me? I don't know.
I'm telling them they should do that, or stochastic them. Because that's where, again, the, the previous cap was, was wrapped around this, this thing called the B E Q Wellhead Protection Guidance Document. And, and what, what it seems to me, correct if I'm wrong, what we're doing here, we are writing a land use plan under statute X, Y, Z that empowers the, the county to do that as a predicate for developing appropriateness. So I think they ought to be spelled out early enough. I guess, okay, so I'm suggesting they get a little to do at your counterpart in the city to, to make that, make sure that is stated correctly. Um, okay, other, other thoughts? Again, we're going to be kicking this around a bunch. My, my goal with, with spending time on it tonight was to get these thoughts to STANTEC sooner rather than later to increase the chance that they'll come back to us with something that ironed all the wrinkles on.
Um, please, I'll just add, it's not really about the plan, but, um, both those meeting dates, um, for next week, we, I did get confirmation from Jackie. So we have the room, so if the meeting on twenty-first is ago, then we'll, we'll be here for those that want to be, there'll also be a Zoom link, those that want to be by Zoom as well. Um, and then the twenty-second, we can also be here, so.
And, and neither of those will be a public comment opportunity.
That'll be like a work session.
And we won't need to worry about a quorum. So if for some reason that doesn't work, that's fine, but here's our opportunity to move our thoughts forward. Okay, that's all I got on cap updates. Others? Hearing that, uh, should we take a short break and then we'll move on to item eight? Considerations of planning and zoning. Does that work? Okay. Five minutes?
I don't think I wanted to hear this.
Well, I think, I mean, I think there's a real issue. Human ethics, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Drive to cap, it's just a picture. Okay, uh, we're back on, in session on the agenda, item eight. Um, so just to get us on track, you, you guys sent out a new markup since August. So some changes were in red, others were in blue, so anyway, the color coding was a little inconsistent. Um, and I had marked up a paper copy of that, but I think I've got cross references.
It helps if you're really old school because underline and strike through is a better way to, easier way to think.
Than, than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a very good point. It's, it's, it's all in there. Thank you guys for, for making the changes.
We just select print in black and white.
Okay, so, yeah. I've got it, we're going to get those up. And I, I confess, I had intended to give that, my kind of page by page notes that I did get to it. So we're going to transparent, really worried about that. Um, so, uh, process going forward, uh, do you want to review what you've changed since then quickly? Or, or then we go back to, we stopped at page four, one, three, and we were just going through it one by one. Erst, Mr. Gerch, what, what do you, what do you think works best here to bring us up to speed with changes since then? Or just dive in and keep going?
Um, yeah, I can just give a, a quick overview of the differences between, uh, the last uh, proposition, which was before this commission and this current one. Uh, throughout, um, and based off of the request of this board, I added prelim, where the term uh, preliminary plat and report was, I added the term, uh, preliminary plat and preliminary report. Um, just to clarify that those were two different things, but they are kind of part and parcel for when you're, uh, actually doing a separate review. Oh, yes, lot of, uh, so I added definitions for final plat. Um, large acreage subdivision, major subdivision, minor subdivision, uh, preliminary plat and preliminary report, subdivision permit application and zoning certificate, uh, based off of, uh, the recommendations of our last go-through. Um, so those are all reflected in two point two, but suppose we can get to that. Um, and then as to chapter four, which is really where those requirements are for uh, subdivision permit applications. Uh, based off of the direction of this commission, we have moved, or sorry, not chapter four, chapter, chapter five. Originally in the preliminary report was the uh, requirements for.
These were financial insurance and water rights.
Water rights, uh, water rights and.
Covenants.
Covenants. Yeah, we moved that into the subdivision permit application, which would be the second.
Which in old parlance was the final.
Yes, uh, so that would be, I suppose, the, uh, the final or the secondary stage of review. Oh, and I, I believe also went throughout and, um, changed, uh, usage of, of words like lot or block to parcel. As we, we had a lengthy discussion about parcel. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, in, in my li, list of things that, that we had kind of fuzzy, um, the whole interplay with D E Q, with the delegation agreement, did you have a chance to think about that in here or make any changes or we, I was still perking and I'm not suggesting that you haven't done a great deal of good work here. Wondered if that was the other thing that's kind of on my, think about list.
Um, so I will say as, as an initial matter, uh, my office, I, so I suppose myself particularly, had an opportunity, uh, thanks to, uh, Mr. Chair to work with the local government practicum at the, uh, the law school. And they will be helping me with a, well, student and the director of that practicum, Professor Chino will be helping me with some research on, um, really what the county's authority is regarding the regulation of septic systems, um, particularly their subdivisions, but also just across, uh, the board. And my, my initial thoughts remain that without a delegation agreement. my initial thoughts remain that without a delegation agreement, we cannot be conducting our own review of the safety inadequacy or imposing standards which are different than Wyoming DEQ's for review of a chapter 23 subdivision report. I think that there is, I think that there is room that we could just possibly flat out impose just a requirement for, you know, centralized water system, our centralized sewage system. For, yeah, centralized sewer systems for subdivisions going forward. But I'm not quite sure on whether this would be the most appropriate place because I would think that we would want that to be sort of by area and not just a flat out. Unless, of course, that is what this commission wanted to do policy-wise, just flat out impose the requirement for centralized sewage systems throughout the county. But if we wanted to do it more by sound, I think that that would be something that might have to be, or would be better addressed through zoning regulations, sort of like how we've done with APSB. And I did not get the opportunity to go through and look at other counties and how exactly they will automatically require some sort of centralized sewage system. And also, I don't fully understand centralized sewage systems. So, you know, if we're getting like these little, oh, sorry. Mr. Hanning?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Oh, it looks like Mr. Hanning has something to say. Do you need to unmute?
I'm sorry, I'm a sleep deprived person who's been camping with sixth and seventh graders for a couple nights. Oh, let's see, so can I, can I just recap back to you, Mr. Ehrich, to see whether I got that right? So the, the delegation agreement right now with DEQ is fairly limited in what we can do right now without coming up with a serious set of regulations that we go and collaborate with DEQ and get their blessing and do a new delegation agreement. So a big, a big lift when there's a lot of weights already being lifted up in the air right now. So you're, you're saying the only thing you can do short of that would be to just outright require, require systems for a subdivision, like a centralized system, whether that is like three houses going to a package unit system together or a whole subdivision going to some kind of wastewater treatment system. Those automatically bring in DEQ. So even if we redid our delegation agreement with them, anything that triggers needing centralized wastewater, it goes right into their shop. You can't avoid that. That's what I got from our work session with them. And so my, I guess my question is, if I'm repeating back to you what I think you just said, can you look at this not just from a zoning district, but from an overlay zone? Could you apply this, this treatment requirement to the cap overlay zone?
For new subdivisions going forward. You know, I apologize to backpedal a little bit, Commissioner Hanning, but I think that I would first want to look at other counties that do have kind of automatic requirements for, you know, treatment levels or type of sewage system to see first if they do have a 185306 delegation agreement, which we do not. We have the small wastewater permitting delegation agreement, but we do not have the subdivision water quality and sewage quality. Or, well, sorry, just essentially water quality delegation. So, yeah.
Okay, so it's maybe not the, it needs more research to figure out if that is a viable direction to go in. Other, other than that, the only, the only thing that I can think of doing in this situation is to me, be more prescriptive in what parameters are required to be put in the model, in the Werman model to begin with. Can the county require an applicant to submit the, the Werman model runs to DEQ, say, using a bracketed range of affluent concentrations of nitrate? You know, right, I guess off the top of my head, I can't remember what number they're using right now. But then our own Septic and Cleechfield study that the county and city performed jointly gave a higher number. Like, could we be prescriptive and say, when you run your model, you must run it for, for these two ranges? And that's just an example of like, what can we do to tighten up? What goes into the Werman model at the front end? Not when, not when the preliminary report comes in. Because the makeup of this commission will change and there, there could be people who know nothing about how these aquifer models work or don't work. And, and it would be better to not have that burden be on the commissioners to a certain extent, to have it be more straightforward. And so I guess I just wonder, is, is that another avenue we could be looking at? Is just tightening up the parameters of what applicants have to use in the model? Or is that overstepping our authority?
Well, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the DEQ chapter 23 report specifies sort of those parameters, does it not? Are the rules and regulations for chapter 23 of the water quality rules? I don't have those directly in front of me. They do not, they do not, they're one parameter that they specify. Otherwise, the consultant is invited to come forward with their suggestion and they have defaults. Use these unless you've got a better idea, but they aren't prescribed. Okay. Then in that case, I would think, yeah, because essentially the, the provisions minimum of 185315. So, yeah, impose requirements on subdividers or subdivisions which are more restrictive than the provisions of this article. I see that a little more as a, what the information that we can require from them based off of past discussions with DEQ. I don't think that we have carte blanche, carte blanche ability to just impose our own standards that are different than DEQ. But I think that we can always specify what information is required and even require more information. I think that we could get some sort of peer review. But I, I believe just under the current structure, that would have to be before it goes to DEQ. And I don't know exactly when or why we would require, well, I understand why, but I don't understand what, you know, what sort of mechanism would then require that, that peer review.
So don't we have precedent for the, like, like this engineer, that the county can ask for a review of a document or a set of calculations if we find it necessary at the applicant's expense? Like in subdivisions? Well, in our body of regulation, I've become a continent concept in other places.
Yeah, some provisions we allow that, yeah, towers, we allow that. Or, I mean, there's a provision in there since we can get expertise on these issues.
As a, not that we're gonna do it every time, but if we feel it's necessary.
Right, right. And a lot of times we don't.
Most of the time we're not.
Yeah, like the tower stuff. I mean, we have our county engineer look at it and, you know, I mean, really, we just look at a few things or whatever. If we were getting into some technological, like how the radio frequency is affecting everything else, we needed to do a study, then we would definitely find that out. That's not what our engineer would do, but we could.
So that could be a model for what we're talking about here.
Yeah, and I think it would, it would have to go to a peer review of the, the study itself and not a peer review of whether that study says that it is, or whether that, sorry, and not a determination of whether the system is safe and adequate. Because without a delegation agreement, that determination stays with DEQ.
Although, the way chapter 23 is set up is quite clear that DEQ is advisory to the county commissioners in their approval or denial of a subdivision application. Now, we tend to treat it as, DEQ's yes, then the answer is yes, but that's the way that's set up.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's also some language in here. If the board acts contrary to the DEQ recommendation, it has to be noted on the plat and in, in conveyance documents.
Yep, and that's for a, if it's an adverse recommendation.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so.
Yeah, then that's.
But there's a, there's a lot of material in the amendment before us requiring the applicant to demonstrate the adequacy of their water and wastewater system. You're suggesting that much of that is, should be restricted.
Now, that is the language from 306. Okay, so yeah, I, I will concede on that point. That the determination of whether it is, or whether the applicant has demonstrated the safety inadequacy still does lie with the county.
In the spirit of DEQ and this Werman model that was having referred to a moment ago, they have set up, if you can demonstrate that you've got less than 10 milligrams per liter that the downstream gradient, then it's a yes, if it's more than it's a no. But the county could say, we want to hold people to a higher standard. That would be an example of like what we're talking about here, where we'd say, yeah, 10 ain't good enough, we want five. That, that would be an example of, maybe now we're in that, can't set a new standard, but you can, you can say, I don't like the old one or something. I mean, that's just all kind of subtle, I realize. We'll find our way through the thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's what makes you nervous is, I suppose, when you kind of have these explicit standards which aren't really tied to process or requirements there, you know, that's kind of like their threshold. And from my understanding, that's also the general threshold for all nitrate review levels, is it not?
It's a standard DPA is propagated as a requirement before public water supplies. That's, that's all. We simply adopt it for other purposes. Its only formal existence is public water supplies, which means 20 people more than nine months here or something. There's criteria for that. We're not gonna solve that tonight, but are we kind of giving you enough feedback to perceive that the, asking the right questions?
Yeah, and I suppose, you know, I'm, I feel like I, you know, when it comes to this, I'm kind of the laborer for exactly, you know, there's a kind of hydro geological issues. So I would request that for, you know, these kind of proposals, you know, tell me what it is that you want to do. And, you know, especially for kind of an automatic requirement of centralized wastewater systems. That has been on my list. I would still just like to look at other counties to see exactly how they automatically require those. But in my mind, it would make more sense to kind of have parameters of when that is automatically required.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think as you're researching that also, another, another part of that puzzle is when, as Vern just mentioned, there are thresholds in place. And I think it also will matter what the delegation agreement between EPA and the state is on wastewater because that's, I can't remember when that happened, but it's been within the last 12 years, give or take a little bit, that, that DEQ actually has that authority on those centralized systems. Prior to that, it was EPA, so where those thresholds are and, and how much authority DEQ has to delegate will matter a great deal because of their agreement with US EPA.
Wyoming is unique in being the only state that does not have privacy under 634.
But it does on wastewater systems.
That's the water side and the wastewater side. No, it's, it's a little confusing that way. But, so as we're reading the regulations, am I right to think that much of this discussion about an application has to include a discussion, water wastewater is, is in play? And I guess that's right. Okay. I understand what you're talking about.
Because I just, I just carried over the 185306 requirements, which had changed a lot from our previous resolution. And I think that further. We had also been discussing, I think, cumulative impacts. And I think that's absolutely something that we could direct the engineer to make study on. I mean, are there, from an engineering perspective, is there kind of a, a known model that people can use to do that or?
I would say that that's almost impossible, given, given the, all you have to do is look at a soils map about Albany County to know how difficult it would be to have a model for cumulative impacts because you can move 15 feet one direction and the soil profile completely changes from, from heavy clays to, to sugar sand, for lack of a better way to put it, so.
I mean, I think, Mr. Ehrich, you've framed it quite nicely is, we should tell you what we want to do and you tell us if it's legal. Yeah, I would give you some structure instead of, yeah, yeah. All right, I think that's a challenge to, to folks. Ms. Hattigan, you want to weigh in on that?
But I don't know if I'm weighing in on that, but Mr. Chair and Mr. Ehrich. I guess following up on the advanced treatment option, just my notes from our work session with DEQ, they said the county's doing treatment, or Lincoln County, and that Park County was asking for advanced treatment at that time. I don't know where they are in their process. And it, it seemed like it was sort of a flexible situation in terms of where your point of compliance was for meeting standards. You know, whether you make it at the outfall from. You know, whether you make it at the, the outfall from your treatment system or you make it at the point where the, the effluent has made it through the Bados zone and is now mixing into the groundwater. You, you can, Jennifer seemed to describe that we could, we could come up with various options as to where your point of compliance was. So it seems like going down the path of treatment, advanced treatment, however you want to frame that, is, is probably the best thing we could do, the, the strongest and best thing for the vulnerable areas of our aquifer. So I, I, I would encourage you to, when you get the time, to look into what the other counties are doing and see if something would fit for us.
Well, and I would point out that we, we're going to have to wrestle with that on our APOC. If we're going to require as part of our regulations that you shall put in advanced, like I said, now you'll put in advanced treatment if you are building a new system or replacing old. The recommendation of STANTE. What does it mean? What's advanced? What's enhanced? Those are words that, that are difficult to pin down, which I think we will have to do as part of that operation, and that cascaded to whatever we want to do to extend it outside the APOC.
So STANTEC actually will be defining that, and I think it's 60% nitrate removal from the tank to the leach field or something like that, so.
Okay, so we have to look at that as, yeah, as a template. So, yeah, these, these two overlapped here that we could take advantage of. And just from my own experience, Lincoln County, they have a zoning called the mixed use. And they just require enhanced septic systems for that zone. Go back to a comment you said earlier. And do you announce they have a delegation agreement? I, I don't know. I don't, I just, I see it from the engineers I worked with. And that would even just be for a individual development, not a subdivision? My encounter with it is subdivisions that include mixed use. So, yeah, I don't know what all their different zones are, but, but I thought the relevant point is they have certain zonings. And if you're going to do a subdivision in that zone, I guess I don't know versus individual tank.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then they have a list of approved specific brands that they, rather than the American standard, like Mr. Hattig indicated, they just have an approved system. So, yeah, there are suppressants out there.
Right, and I, yeah. Yeah, if you're talking about Lincoln County, that's certainly strong precedent for our authority to do that. I suppose it's, it just comes back to, again, I don't know exactly what the various members of this commission are fishing.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, that was all spawned by my question about DEQ, but it was one that kind of runs through this, so we'll want to run that through. And the peer reviews are something I know, I noted, we talked about before, and we had a little discussion of that just here. So what do we want to go through? Changes since August? Or proceed from where we stopped in August? Obviously, we're not going to finish this one more session, but what's, what's your pleasure? Looking at the board as well as you guys. By what desire, presenter prefer?
I'm prepared to take up the page 4.3 where we left it last time, but that's just me.
Yeah, well, yeah, why don't we do that and then, and then perhaps we can come back at the next trick given one and go through from start to finish.
Okay. And I would request that, and everyone's infinite free time, just like mine. We, that the members of this commission just peruse the added definitions to see if that satisfies your desires for clarification. So I suppose we left off chapter five.
4.3, that's right. I put my sticky note in. And, and, yeah. Yeah, 25, I was making pages, usually old pages, but I, I did cross-reference. It's, it's section six.
Okay.
This is where we were. But I didn't want to keep this under our agenda. I, I'm feeling a little like, I know that the two of you have spent a lot of time on this, so. Appreciate everyone's interest in let's, let's push all these things forward. It's tempting to just say, okay, let's just do that. Tell it's done, but I, if my colleagues agree, then let's, let's continue to to press along and that we'll get closer to the finish line, even though it may be a little further out, we hope. And then just one, one more general comment. I, I had a discussion with Mr. Hirsch a little bit. Much of what has been presented just so far is coming from from your work, Mr. Ayers, on trying to think the port was state statute. And, and that's kind of a, we got to start there. I had invited Mr. Hirsch to, to then instead of the lawyerly approach put on his long experience on the implementation side, so we would continue to, to you to to go through all this within the, the structure of the laws that's been explained to us and think about implementation. When somebody comes through the door housing action. Which I have not done yet, so we welcome that feedback. Okay, so where I am, section six, yeah, right there. And so, other reason, I'm not sure how you organize your notes, but I'm prepared to just proceed as we were last time said. Okay, yes. So my, my next comment, this is a felt page 419, which is still page 419. So did anybody have anything they wanted to bring to the attention of our our superior staff? It took us here and there. It's almost all strike counts, as I look, look at it. Okay, here and then I look at sections permit fees, it's called. It's that word, Joe, to have, tell you a page number?
Uh, David.
419, okay.
Page 46.
419, that's where I was. And this was just all the little stuff I saw going on, but we'll pick it up as we go. Uh, the section was new, section seven on my permit fee. Yeah, there we go. So it struck me as a little odd that in the first instance, we say accompanied by a reasonable fee. And then down there, just, just at the edge of your screen, it says, they give us a hundred bucks. So I was wondering what's the, does that work? Do we have a set fee for any of these? Why is it a hundred instead of a reasonable?
That's the notice fee.
What are the difference? And is that just, yeah, the permit fee and the notice fee are separate fees. And one is, is suitable to just fixing it, but the other one is kind of open-ended. I just wondered how that works.
Um, I mean, all fees actually go through the Administrative Procedures Act, whether they're stated specifically in the regulations or not, so. So, yeah, I don't know if they need to be in here specifically. This is, I think this is what it says in statute, basically, or close to it, is a reasonable fee. And then the notice fee, I don't, that was just the, the amount that came up with. I mean, that's pretty much takes care of the cost.
It covers the cost of publishing and the newspaper.
Yeah, the newspaper and then they borrow the, I mean, it should cover the cost of the actual signs at some point, I guess.
Yeah, so if I'm the applicant, I have to ask what today's reasonable fee is?
It's on the application, so.
Oh, okay.
It's, I think it's like 200 bucks or is it 300 bucks for a?
I don't know, what is it?
I think it's $300 for a lot. $300 for a preliminary plat, and then it's either $300 or $50 per lot, whichever is great.
You guys just decide that on fly. I guess, is that something that should be in our, in our regs or, or not?
So that's what I was trying to say is, we have a fee schedule that is adopted and it does go through the Administrative Procedures Act to get adopted, so it's on a separate document, separate from this.
It's also on the front page of the. Okay, would it reference to that document? Um, because I'm just taking, I'm an applicant, I've read through this, wondering what about the rest?
Well, you're not really out of picks and I'll read through these. No, um, I mean, I don't think it would hurt just to reference the most up-to-date.
The thing is, is the current fee schedule.
If you just put the current fee schedule, it's adopted and is available online, so.
I think that's always kind of the challenge.
The regulations in general is leaving it vague enough. Vague enough to where if other processes or mechanisms sort of change, that it's still valid.
Valid, yeah.
All right, well, just cut my, I was reading through. You guys are comfortable with it.
I mean, it's a good point, because we do specifically say $100 for notice and, but. I mean, I think they're different too, because the permit fees can be different based on how many lots you're doing. The notice fee is always going to be the same, because it's always going to be, you know, I mean, I guess if, you know, the boomerang raises their prices way too much, then we might have to.
This is not the issue, cost of fee.
Maybe it was a practical matter, which is general. When people come, have they read through this in detail, or they come to you and say, we want to do this, what do we need to do?
Most of the time, we don't even talk to the people.
Yeah, we work with the engineers. And there, there, you know, some engineers, some firms and some individuals, they will read through these things and try to understand them. There are others where they just come in, it's like, okay, what do I need to do? We have a checklist that's very generalizing, or generalizes the regulations that they kind of follow. That would be what we, we give, always give the, or actually the checklist are part of our application, so they're kind of an appendix at the, at the back. That's what they can look through. And then, yeah, and then everything refers to where, you know, where it's at in here, so. I would say, like, the layperson, the, the property owner is not going to read through this. However, the engineers should, and some of them do, but some of them don't. And that's where they like turn in something, it's like, okay, let's see how this.
To be blunt, the ones that are here a lot of the time know them.
Right.
And the ones that are, yeah. Yeah, and the ones that are only here maybe for the first time, they just rely on the checklist.
Right, and then there's, you know.
After all, applicant is paying for their time.
Yeah, and they'll come in and say, you know, why do I have to do this? And then we have to pull out the book and say, well, because it says right here, so. But, yeah, like, you know, the, the firms we work with all the time, they're, they're pretty good about knowing what needs to be done and they, they've kind of got it.
Or I get asked by Colorado or something like that.
It said, or I get asked by Colorado, so.
Okay. Just something to cut, cut my eye off, felt that it would be helpful to, well. I'm over on 53 page. Again, anybody else got anything in between, caller? Just printed the thing and read it, flagged stuff. And what we see over in chapter five in general is a, is a whole lot of stuff that got moved. So my question was just what, what's moved and what's new we got? I'm sorry.
I, I did have a question on page 52. And that would be on item nine and 10, and like, I was wondering if this was just, if that was available online. In other words, what about access to adjacent properties where it's asking for contours extended onto adjacent property?
So depending on who you work with or what they do, some of them actually go shoot, shoot that, and I think they could kind of see or interpolate onto other properties. A lot of.
So they just basically rely on the larger scale topoes that are already in place.
They'll take that and they'll take, you know, whatever the contour interval is and then add the lines in there.
Okay.
The problem though with that, though, is you go out there sometimes and there's a big swell or something that's not taken into account. And that's why the engineer does a site visit, because they'd say, okay, well, that's not quite right, so.
This may be changing, but. Uh, because LiDAR has just arrived for a large chunk of the county, maybe, maybe all the county as of late June this year. And that's going to transform.
Is it available?
Yes, what is it?
LiDAR.
It's, it's published by USGS now. It, it got published late June.
Well, that's, I saw, I saw a big contract provided, so we fly the whole county LiDAR and they're going to give us two-foot intervals, so.
Well, is that what the assessor did?
That would be two different.
I know, but I want that there.
LiDAR is a universal data that you can generate anything you want with.
Right, but it's something that's going to generate.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't have to, you can do it. Anyway, so that may be changing.
Cool, so what is this current status of contract for the, for the county? The city's got published maps of two-foot counters.
Uh, you go onto YGS and get their data off there and it's from like 1970, so.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm not, I should talk with the assessor, because I don't know with what they're doing, because they're, they're spending quite a bit of money to do a, a fly to get some of that. What do they call it? It's not the straight up and down, but it's kind of a, or, or it comes in an angle. You know, imagery or whatever, but I don't, I don't know if that includes some contour information. Um, I have access to their program, I still know how to, I mean, I know how to use it for what I need, which is usually just kind of look at it and look at properties or whatever, but I don't know if it has the capability of having, you know, the contours and stuff, so I don't, I don't know. The answer to my question.
We're looking into, I mean, that's, that's constantly what engineers are looking for, is that real fight. The fight contract, which is what the city provides.
Well, the city did, they, they did that. I, I don't know exactly when, but then they, they, they had someone come in and do that for them, because it goes a little ways out into the county, but we've never paid for that unless that's a part of this contract that the assessor has, so.
Okay, I jumped in.
I was just, I was, that was just a point of curiosity as to how that happened, so.
Yeah.
And then we have a GIS layer for the 20% homes.
Which they figure out with their contribution.
Yeah. Okay, my, my general question there was just is there new stuff embedded in this? Or did most of this get moved across from section four?
Um, so I guess if we kind of go point by point. The problem with old chapter four, where it had those minimum standards, that was about four or five versions of 185306 ago. So a lot of them are new. But it's still within that statutory framework. Uh, so I guess under the preliminary report, this number one narrative summary of the subdivision proposal, that was my recommendation uh, just to kind of give us a, a global overview of the proposal itself. And then we get into more specific from there. Uh, so number two, evidence satisfied for that 2A was the same, or complies with the subdivision part of the zoning resolution. Um, section B is from statute.
So if you get, we're on 53, sorry, for page numbers. Okay. What you'll see is just a, it's all material, but not sure.
Yeah. Um, so 2B would be statutory language, which was carried over and likely updated as well. Seared system study, that's.
Uh, sewage system study, that's straight from statute. Water supply system study, it's straight from statute, so it's both a carryover and an update.
And the update mostly wrapped around statutory changes since our previous version.
Uh, all the the geology that was a carryover. Um, with some and the the added language. Or actually, sorry, the geology was part of the preliminary report as existed. Um, previously, that would accompany a preliminary plat. Obviously, it was a lot less.
Was it named something else too?
Uh, it was called the. We check. No, it was, uh, it was before, it was the information required in preliminary report, so that's why I kept that language. And we can certainly rework the terminology if desired. Um. The changes for the geol- our geology information, those were based off of. Uh, conversation that Dave, Joe and I had with Jake Schneider. Already had down into five, five, nine, five, ten.
It's down like, it's on page five, eight, now it.
Uh, on five, ten, number six, access, that was a direct carryover. Um, from chapter four. And it is. I was going to see what this commission wanted to do with that.
Okay. We'll go back through this.
What? You said five, ten?
Yeah, it's on the bottom of five, ten.
And that is. Goes back on to five, eleven.
Well, then didn't Jake have a question there at the top of five, nine? About. Hopefully defined requirements for drainage studies?
Yes. He suggested more clearly defining the requirements for drainage studies.
Without suggesting the language.
Yes.
I think we ran out.
He's also hourly.
Yeah.
I think we ran out of time that meeting or something.
I think we did.
We're the cheapest device in this whole discussion.
Yeah, our our former county attorney or county engineer was working on this, but then he retired and moved on, so. Yeah, we had some ideas, but now we're kind of back to the drawing board with the new engineers. Um, is this a good time for a question? Go way back up to where we were.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so five, two, uh, on page, I think it's five, two, sorry, I took you way back up there, but I was. Noticing that we've got this firm delineation stuff or whatever. Um, and it's. This is similar to the the issue with the cap that we brought up, saying if there's not a firm a hundred year floodplain delineation, then, um. I think that they have to calculate it, is that correct?
Yes, that's that was Jake's suggestion, yeah.
I mean, that, I just, I don't know, that could be super expensive, and when do we require that? You know, when do we require that they get this? If there's like a ditch that goes through, like a drainage looking thing or?
Isn't that part of our flood insurance regulations requirements?
Oh, no, so firm it, firm is the R I delineated floodplain.
Yeah.
So that's already on a map, you know, so. If 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 what this is supposed to do is that, if it's not on a map, now we have to require you to do that, when do we require them to do that, you know, just? I I guess I don't. I mean, you can look at the, I mean, you can kind of see where drainage things are, I mean, is that?
My understanding of that requirement when we met. Six or seven months ago was that, um. That was somehow required for some sort of I regulations that we had. How separate and apart from subdivision?
I don't know, I just, I kind of like to stick to what we have a little bit, you know, instead of like making them do more that we don't.
Well, it sounds like that's Jake's question, because maybe we get those with the drainage program.
And I think I talked to him, but I don't remember what he said.
Yeah, if.
Do they have hydraulic capacity to carry the flood through there or something?
If the, yeah, the the drainage study's already been done, this seems like another step too far.
Yeah.
Or this may be his trail something.
Well, okay, yeah, I mean, this is also. Yeah, they do drainage study, they'll look at any existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, meandering stuff, so we have, why are we doing this?
Well, so this is where we are right now, just so everyone's clear, is the information that's required on the face of the preliminary. Sorry, plat. So.
I don't. I don't know, this is something to note, I'll maybe have another special Jake.
Yeah, I'd get back to my last question, Kennedy, that we have a drainage study, if we all see those, I guess I pretty much just.
Is he just saying that if it's within the hundred year flood zone, to mark it on the plat?
That was the old language, I believe.
It's not, I don't know. It's no, it says that there's not.
Should be required on the face of the.
Flat section. So, I mean, I guess the one place this could come into play is like, there's no firm maps up in the national forests or any of the little subdivisions up there. That they don't, there's no data out there, so, I mean, there could be a creek that's running right through their property.
Wouldn't that be an amount?
Doesn't matter, I mean, it still has to, they'll buy by this stuff too. Yeah. So I don't, I don't know, I'll I'll put a note here to ask. Jake about it.
And do we, well, I guess here's just for information, we don't say you can't build another year floodplain, we're doing now. Okay, so this is kind of like my comments on CAP, but. Does there's something actionable, why requires?
Yeah. Okay, sorry, it's interrupt.
No, no, it's not my eyes. It's in the Facebook.
I know, it is, but like.
I think you could just delete everything from four through the end, because the the firm is already available. Right, so that should be included, but. We could delete the balance of that.
The part about they got to make one of.
Yeah.
So it should be the FEMA firm under your delineation if the subdivision is located within. Yeah, for that delineation, okay.
And and that language is almost too inclusive. Because it's basically saying. If it's not. If it's located out of that delineation, you have to calculate the floodplain, well, what if it's already calculated firm right next to the height? That seems. A a lot excessive there at that point. In other words, it's not just if it's not available, as with the case with some of the mountain subdivisions, but. If it's located anywhere outside of the the FEMA delineation, it's required.
That's business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to me, I'm like, why are we? What's the point in doing this, we're calculating a hundred year floodplain, but if it's outside the FEMA firm stuff, then there's no like federal regulations on this. We're just creating something that.
Restriction on the land.
We would probably have to create our own.
Yeah.
You know, regulation for this.
Insurance rates, look at hundred year floodplains or something.
On FEMA, that from FEMA, they do, yes, but you're you're required to for your mortgage if you're within hundred.
But if you're in an area where FEMA has not provided the map, that you're.
Well.
But you probably don't provide flood insurance in those areas, so. I mean, that's the whole reason we have flood, our our regulations is so we can have flood insurance in the county, so.
So if the flood insurance availability is tied to existing FEMA maps.
Yes.
Why go outside that box?
Right.
Good, right. So what would the what the proposition be to just delete all that or?
We'll still put, if there is a. If a hundred year, a hundred year floodplain is defined by the FEMA firm map, yes, put it on there, yes, there's special regulations for subdivisions, but if there's no defined. Uh, a hundred year, you know, floodplain, then there's, there's no reason to have it on there, you have no regulations.
Your suggestions, you have everything for.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. But wouldn't you have to have some qualifier, like the FEMA firm hundred year delineation, if available?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
You got that written down, you can change it.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So back to your just general.
Oh, uh, so, yeah, we had gone through the geology, a lot, um. A lot of that was suggestions from Jake Schneider. Suppose we were possibly hoping to get some. Uh, input from commissioners on this. Then we get down to utilities. Oh, yeah. Um. This is the access thing, can we look at this too?
Yeah, we're, let's, we'll come back through all this, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Where did everybody go, Jeff?
I, I don't know, Ma. It was like suddenly they were freezing for a bit. And then they kind of just left.
It's weird that we're still on the meeting though.
I know.
There we got you back.
There they are.
There they are, yeah. Okay.
All right, our internet connection dropped or something. I don't know.
Okay. We got you again.
Okay, so yeah, back to utilities. Part A is statutory. And then part, subpart B. I'm not finding in statute right now. That may have been carried over. And then these written certifications, I suppose throughout the platting statutes, which are 35 or 3412, 101. Sequential and then also in 185306 and in other parts of 185. There are these certifications and acknowledgements that subdividers must affirmatively present on contract solicitations or offers. Or on the, yeah, or agreements. And I just kind of collected all those together and put it in one section. Because that makes it some sense to me. And then number nine. That is statutory language. But I think that's also a good sort of. Reserving clause because in the past we have asked for more information than what applicants have provided. And I think that that is completely legal. To ask for more information than what they've included in their application because that really only helps that.
And it's actually a way to also help. Avoid having to go back through this section again. Every year in July and August, so.
Yeah, but since I had a specific comment on that, it struck me as it's kind of open-ended like. We could ask pretty darn thing we just think of that.
Well, it's true, but it's also true that we can't foresee every circumstance of an application. And, and what that, the questions that might arise from that that might actually be, be big questions too.
And just one right off the bat was the Ivanoff and Bacon subdivision applications where. Their, their engineers. Did not believe that our subdivision regulations. Regulated the primary connecting roads between subdivision and public road. They clearly did, but so they didn't provide any information on that stretch of Cary Lane. So that would, that was an area where it was completely appropriate in order to. Further explore whether the regulations have been met. To require extra information. So where there's an extra constraints on, but keeping these guys going crazy. That's to be for 10 generations of geology. For Dave and Joe. Well, specifically the board and then therefore also planning. As, as an extension of the board. And. Yeah, then we would be. Or then the board in this commission would be. Bound by the parameters of sort of arbitrariness and capriciousness or a priest. And this is old language. So this isn't new language that.
No, that's not.
That's also statutory. Okay, all right, well then that, that pretty well retires me. Okay. So getting back to our. One by one. On page 54. We have discussed this. This issue. What do we require from DEQ? And this kind of repeats all that, so I'll, I'll put that over in the to be ironed out. Because it looks like there's a lot of list of things here. gallons per day of such and such, that that's, that's somewhere in this mix and that's DEQ. Yeah, and that's, just again, for the studies, that's all 306, 185306 language. That's just the statutory language that I carried over from our previous. Resolution. Well, carried into the new chapter and updated because they have made quite a lot of changes in those areas. So that was kind of a starting point for this commission. And then with the expectation that the requirements there under will be explored. But further. But part of that exploration, as I understood earlier discussion, is whether we just say. DEQ takes care of it. What I've seen here is almost a recitation of what the chapter 23 water wastewater suitability study requires. Well, isn't this the preliminary report which they, and this is, we're still a preliminary report here. So you guys are seeing basically the chapter 23 and signing off that they can send it, remember? Well, and at the top of this page, yeah, I'm almost thinking. Give us your chapter 23 report. Kind of what we're saying here, but we're not calling it that quite.
But on.
It's on page five.
Five, four. On five, four. Everything from B on down is for, except for individual onlot systems. So.
Okay. Yeah, this is only for, yeah, if you're to centralize.
Yeah.
Um, the way that we had it. Sorry, the way that we had it structured before was it was just statutory language and. That is. The statutory language for the sewer sewage system study. It doesn't obviously call for chapter 23 report because statute then dictates regulations.
And that's 185306.
Yeah, that's 185306. The chapter 23 addresses central waters as well, just just.
And right.
Okay, well. We just, we need to kind of get that all sorted out. If this is statutory, maybe it's contradictory of saying you have to follow chapter 23 DEQ regs.
Well, I think that's in the same. Statutory.
No, it's that highlighted part on three that was. I think language that. We had added.
Oh, okay.
You know, we're trying to get the jump on these chapter 23 studies.
Yeah. But like in statute, I guess what I was saying is like. B, for the most part, maybe not three or whatever, but that's taken from statute. But then also in statute is the DEQ report requirement as a separate. Well, so they, I mean, it says, these are the things you have to provide. And then also DEQ needs to do their report as well for anything that's not exempt from the three lots or less or whatever we do.
Yeah, it's basically, it says these are the requirements for the sewage system study and the water supply study under statute, 185303. And then it says that upon receipt of the application. And prior to approval, the county or the subdivider shall send three copies of the portions of the application prepared under this section. To DEQ for review of the safety and adequacy of the proposed sewage system and proposed water supply system. Which then. And then. Yeah, DEQ promulgated those regulations for what they wanted to see out of that study. So there's kind of, I'm sure in, in reality, all the engineers just go off of the DEQ regs and not necessarily all those. Okay, so here's the, so chapter 23 of the DEQ regs was promulgated subsequent to 185303, was what you're suggesting. Yes, all right, yeah. And. I didn't quite catch, so is chapter 323, is that specific to onlot subject systems?
No, yes, it's a, it's a water wastewater suitability study.
Okay. Okay. So, oh, yes.
So I mean, this, this, what I'm showing right now, this is the only thing that's required for onlot systems.
Under statute.
Under statute, yeah.
Obviously, chapter 23 beefs that up quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, so because that's where there's a separate requirement to do that.
Which is why I suggested adding that language because it makes it easier. Uh, with keeping that statutory language, which was in place before.
Well, okay, so most areas the statute could be cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, well, those guys aren't within our reach unfortunately.
Right, right, right.
Okay, you want to hear that? We have the same issue at chapter five.
That's your job.
I don't have to. I don't have to go to the minerals.
It's all right.
Okay.
On that next page, five dash five, we have a similar bit where it talks about DEQ chapter 23. So there. DEQ also has chapters 12 and 26 that are applicable to these discussions.
Okay.
That talk about middle well construction standards. State engineer's office has something that's, because it's called water well middle construction standards. So if we're, we're telling people what they have to comply with. Do we want to get into this cross-referencing with state statute or do we, that just digs us into a hole that we can't keep up with?
Or the state regs.
State regs, yeah. I mean, what's the, what's the. At all, what's the revision rate? Well, so I mean, we could just say that complies with all applicable state. Regulations. Maybe something like it, like that. I mean, I, once you start calling out specific ones, then you're kind of starting down the track of both, but all about the other ones.
Yeah. I see. I don't want to get in the business of reviewing the state's, you know, well, stuff.
Any other problem with specific sites will make, sometimes when there's a very substantial change, they actually will do another chapter. And, and avoid that other one. So, yeah.
Well, while you're on that page, scroll up a little bit. Other items, C.
Going the wrong way?
Yeah, there we go.
I was going the right way.
Okay.
So you were going that direction you went. Where's the end?
Yeah, what's up with that? Throughout, we have these, these bridges for report can be by one registered professional engineer. And then sometimes it's registered geologist, sometimes it says one or the other. I, I quite like the language that was developed in the. APOC where it talks about appropriately qualified profession. Oh, because engineers covers everything from aerospace to, to wastewater and similar geology. So I'm wondering if we could bring that language forward to most of these kinds of cases. Go ahead. Yeah, actually, so I do remember when I was comparing our older, our, well, our current regulations and 185306. There is not. There is not the same. Or no, there's Wyoming professional geologist is in. It's in fire 306 for water. And then. Yeah, there is not the same. These are statutory again. Well, so I think some are and some are. Wyoming professional engineer. But in any case, we could expand on the statute and say. Like I say, that language should be developed without other. Yeah, I don't think it's going to hurt anything.
No.
Properly, we, we geologists, these engineers get out, out of their lane to use a, wish your Kennedy term. Probably vice versa. The point is somebody knows what they're doing. Yeah, based off my quick glance, professional engineer was something that I carried forward from the current ones. Whereas professional geologist is actually required to understand as water study supplies. Or sorry, centralized. Water system, water supply system. Review under statute. Looking at this particular example, C sub five or C sub six is a, is clearly a hydrogeology question rather than a. Conventional civil engineering question. Are you at any effectors?
Yes.
Mine does not do that, no.
No.
But it does have geologist for the water under statute, so. Yeah, we can, you can absolutely differently, so let's consider maybe. Be more specific here. Yeah, over on five seven is where you'll see. Register registered professional geologist. I think it's the same, same issue. So yes, but there's no statutory requirement for professional engineer for the sewage system study. Uh, that was something that was, that was an existing. Requirement, so we can certainly change that. Okay, we're stepping along and Mr. Thine was handing, guys, got anything to want to stop on, let's do that. Over on five eight. Subsection C and then there's what, four, five, or four? Four, yeah, it was just the ambiguity identified by the study. Clarify what study you're talking about. These right there. Okay, but the study, so that would go up to the study where individual onlot wells are proposed as the water supply system. So that's.
It's under the water supply system study.
Yeah, so it's still under the water supply system studying. Because within studies, there are different reports based off of what you are. And that's, again, that's statutory language which we can clean up. Yeah, or maybe just the reference or something. I'm just hearing, reading a lot of reports, studies, which one are you talking about? So just clarification. So then that item number one at the top of that list. Is that statutory?
Yes.
This is, yeah, this is, except for like the few additions, you know, barring Wyoming registered professional engineer, this is all statutory. Where, where I was going with that, what you would really want to know is the annual average peak daily demand if you're actually designing a system now. Well, actually, we can add that to it. Right, for your consideration, if I have to have a base set, estimate total number of gallons per day for subdivision. As well as annual average and peak daily demand. Approaching it as a hydraulics, this is what you really need to know. Okay, now number five. I've also. I've also seen it, Teton County, basically just for their subdivision regulations. Said shall comply with the requirements of 185306. It's just a blanket statement and then they said this is specifically what we want to see. So that could also be avenue. So in the past, we have, we have brought that language forwarded to our. And I think that, yeah, and that's probably still a good idea to so people are more on notice. So to what extent we're commenting on state statute, in number five. I'm looking at plans for mitigation of possible water rights conflicts. I think what we're interested in there is water use conflicts, which is slightly different. For example, if my project is to dry up the watering hole. That's a conflict that we might be interested in that we just not have a water right. So can, can we add?
Many wells would have a water right.
Right, that's why I say we don't, we don't grant water rights to on. What are called beneficial uses underwater law, but we all recognize there are lots of beneficial uses to water.
Yeah.
So those are the ones that we're interested in your impact. Thank, in addition to rights, so can we? We ask that you tell me what the impact of your project is on other water users. Uses. From a quantitative or from a, yeah, I mean, from.
Just a. We're starting to step up as a state engineer there.
Well, we're stepping outside of water rights. But we have to understand that everything that's a good use of water in our state is not water righted.
I mean, that's, that would be changing what this is meaning, right?
Would be adding to, I'm trying to take my guidance, that we have to follow the statute that we can embellish.
Would you remove the right?
No, I would just say, if you're telling me I have the right statute, I would say possible water rights or water use.
Water.
Water uses. To broaden our scope a bit to not water righted. Benefits that we would all, I think, recognize. I, what water uses are you envisioning that aren't attached to a right under the prior appropriations? Environmental, environmental benefits. All practically all of them, they'll be, they'll be explicit environmental thing we have in my water laws, or these industry clubs. Which are very limited set, we're going to take. But let's say I'm going to drill my five wells and to dry up the only source of water for the learning-based alley. I think we would all agree that objectionable, that the alley have a water right.
Okay.
We can always ask them to present a narrative on it. But if we can ask them, just tell us if they think their wells are going to. Create a negative impact on existing use. So you're just, so possible water right or. Or existing uses, how about that? It's on five. Oh, that's on five is right.
Okay, sorry.
All right, well, maybe at this point we're talking about, let's, let's get some thoughts down and come back to those. But that's, that's, I think is germane to what we're trying to do with the regulation. Okay, moving forward, getting anybody that wants to weigh in on any of this, now's the time. I'm on page five eight. The title geology does not adequately describe what follows. Again, if you tell me that I have to do that, then I have to do it, but what follows is soil's hydrology, geology. But all this drainage features stuff, that's, that's not conventional. But all this drainage features stuff, that's, that's not conventionally understood to be geology, under your flows, drainage basins.
Oh.
Yeah, drainage features, called it geology, but that's not a good title. I was having a hard time coming up with title for grouping these together. Geography? Soils, hydrology, geology. Or we can chunk it out further, those, those three describe what follows in that section.
Just call it.
So what were those? Soils, hydrology, geology.
Just commas.
Slashes when I wrote it myself, that's what this thing is about.
Yeah, I did, I tried to put kind of subject matter headers on these subsections just to break up.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm thinking of?
Extreme all the text.
Yeah, just.
Here on five ten. Or talks about L triple C under, or E right there. It looks to be like we're binding the little preservation district to review within sixty days.
That is statutory.
That's.
Okay. That's always the trump card here. We actually asked him to do it in two weeks, they used to do.
It's true. But all right, my comment was we can't control that, but you're saying we can, we can cite state statute too.
I, I used to put, when I was asking for reviews, I'd be like, okay, we asked this to be done in two weeks. However, Mr. Hope, if you want to take sixty days, you can. Because that's what the statute says, so.
Under seven.
He's always.
Access, yes, let's keep going down. In the middle of that, it talks, there's probably.
Didn't you want to talk about?
Go up there to under access, about the third line, right, yeah, there, I think it's. Is that statutory? I didn't like the word, to ensure proper access.
So the statutory requirement.
More lines down on the screen.
And, you know, I would love to know exactly how our current subdivision resolution got to where it is because the requirement for, under statutes, documentation satisfactory to the board that adequate access has been provided and that all proposed streets, alleys and roadways within the subdivision conform to the minimum standards adopted by the board and applied uniformly throughout the county. Which shall not in and of itself constitute consent of the board to locate, repair or maintain roadways or facilities. And that's, that's the only thing about adequate access.
Okay, so I would put inadequate instead of proper.
Okay.
Well, it's a small matter, but proper sounds like it's.
Okay.
Five eleven.
Do you have anything else to add? I would like to look at this a little bit more. I probably want to think about it. Suggestion, this is just one of those deals where one of these areas having to do with maintenance of the road. Like if somebody wants to, to use a privately maintained road. We require basically a road maintenance agreement for that, which in and of itself doesn't sound like it's a bad deal, but basically if there's not a road maintenance agreement, one that exists, now the applicant has to create your road maintenance agreement. And the only way to do that is to get everybody to sign off on it and you're kind of doing things backwards. I would suggest, or at least contemplate instead doing something where if, if you're accessing district roads to get to your subdivision, yes, absolutely, you need to be, you know, get, get into that district. If there's an existing road maintenance agreement, absolutely, you need to do that. But if there's no agreement that's existing, I don't think we should have this requirement. I just think it's burdensome and it's just a way for the neighbor next door to say, we're not signing, you can't do this, you know?
Well, then they get out of that requirement. By making reasonable afterwards.
I know, but I still would rather just not, this is still just convoluted and I don't know.
Well, but don't we, don't we, we approve a subdivision. Our point is we want to reassure the buyers that they could get there. And if the neighbor decides to take a teeth down on the cat to the road, that's a problem.
Well, maintenance and access are two different things.
Yeah.
So this is talking about maintenance. Do they have to have access? Absolutely. We need to make sure they have the legal access to.
Not legal.
Adequate.
Adequate access. We need to have access that's okay with the.
How do I demonstrate adequate access if I don't have any, any guarantee that my neighbor is going to pop up these road?
Because there's a.
Because you have.
Because there's an easement.
Yeah.
Easement doesn't say anything about.
Right, doesn't say anything about maintenance. So maintenance, to me, those are two different issues. But we don't want to require legal access because this convention and the board are not in a position of accord to affirmatively declare whether certain easements provide, which is how we got into bacon, because there was legitimate question based off the language easement, whether it covered those back government laws.
But if I have the seller representing to my buyer that they have adequate access. That does require some kind of maintenance of that access to maintain its adequacy?
Uh, not for the easement.
I can do this for the practical matter. I want to, I want to buy my house and I want to be assured that I can drive in my driveway for the next twenty years. That is the point of requiring adequate access.
It's already have the legal rights to do so. What exactly that road looks like.
Run your own.
Stand between you and property. Well, because also if you are a dominant estate and you have, you know, that access right by easement, you can improve that road with, without legal objection of the serving estate, but. Yeah, the, the road maintenance agreement has gotten us to sticky situations before.
And maybe this is okay because we do have outs, it's just, I, I don't know. I like to simplify things if we can, you know, and, and I feel like if there's not any legal document that says people are maintaining it, why do they have to create it for this whole road and then? You know, I mean.
To kind of stem future conflicts because a part of, you know, I found a case law where essentially that like the Wyoming Supreme Court analyzed subdivision permitting to legislative decisions because there's so much public policy implications. And you're, really the whole point of this is that you're trying to protect unwitting buyers. So.
So then why don't we just make them be the maintenance person on that road? But they're getting it, they're, they have to take care of it instead of having this, have everybody else sign up on it, you know?
Well, but that'd be getting it, the baby in the bath water is what. It's the, is the buyer.
Right.
Okay, so if you want to say that the buyer has to have some arrangement that will his homeowners association or whatever that keeps the road maintained. That has to be the neighbor who maintains it, but the point is that if I'm going to sell you a piece of property, I want to reassure you that you drive there.
Well, yeah, the, the, you know, the HOA or the binding covenants, that would only be applicable to the, in the lots actually that are being subdivided, not necessarily existing, or wouldn't affect existing neighbors.
And the fact that they would have an easement, which we are requiring to their, across the neighbor. That, that, that's the, that's as far as we go with reassurance, that you have an easement. And so we are confident that you can exercise that easement to maintain your road.
Well, I'm sure that the, you know, but then, I mean, if I was representing that party privately, well, then my neighbor is getting a windfall because they're using that road as well and they're not paying in whatsoever. So, but, so I understand the point of this completely. We're trying to, through the subdivision process, eliminate future conflicts.
Then we'll know the attorney's.
I'm mad that, that is part of my professional responsibility is to ensure that my colleagues have.
Part of the ethics code.
Well, all right, maybe we put that on the, on the, to think about, I appreciate that we don't want to overburden our applicant at the same time. But to say that the baby in the bath water is, we want to protect the buyer.
Absolutely, and I'm not saying we don't, I just, I've just been in too many situations where like we had one that was out on two thirty, they were using like a hundred feet of a road they had an easement across, but there was no maintenance agreement for it. So they, the, the neighbor that lived way down the road that wasn't even going to be impacted by it, decided they didn't want it there. They wouldn't sign off on an agreement, and so no agreement was made and the subdivision went away and they couldn't do it, so. I mean, it was kind of ridiculous, but.
Well, but that is, is true if I refuse to give you an easement.
Yeah, but the easement in a lot of cases, the easement's present already.
Yeah, very present.
They, they've been amended since then.
Didn't say affirmatively that you had to have.
You had to have, yeah, maintenance agreement. This gives you an out, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm okay with this, I just, you know, if there would be a way to clean it up. But again, you know, we need to, Mr. Healy's point is very well taken, just, we, we need to protect the buyer, that's the whole process here, that's what we're doing, so.
Okay, you, you clean that up.
Yeah, if I do, I'll let you know. So do I want to?
I'd be there. And maybe you can educate me on the, the dialogue. When do we, when do we ask for that? So we get all these reports and then we say, no, you, that was inadequate, but this all happens under this preliminary report umbrella.
Um, I think it depends on.
Just resist it, it's kind of old, they have to keep asking me to do stuff.
Yeah, so I don't know where this came from. It's not statutory. This was again a carryover. I don't know when it came in. I know that in, in other states, just based off of what I learned in, or from the cases I read in law school. Everything requires a traffic impact study, especially when you're in more urban areas, but I don't know really where this came from.
I think to clarify that a little bit, it's when it impacts a county maintained road. Might be the place to delineate that because we're already asking YDOT about what they think, and so that's their responsibility as far as what they believe is necessary on a on a state maintained road, we already asked that.
Well, in, in our findings to approve the subdivision, we have a specific item that is roads, right? It is not specific. You finger on that, but right, that's in that law list, there's findings. So we've kind of made, demonstrated to us the big, that's road situation.
There's no statutory requirement for YDOT to be involved in the process, that's just something we've traditionally done.
Mars better handle.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I don't, I don't see her on that screen.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Hanning, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Sorry, I had to check out for a few minutes earlier. I could hear you calling my name while I was on the phone with the teacher at a campsite. So I apologize for the momentary lapse. Regarding the traffic impact study, I guess a question I have, taking the Harley Acres subdivision example. You know, we, we heard from many people in that area, the concern about the increased traffic impact in an area where there'd already been some fatalities. And the state looked at that and said, we think it's going to be okay. We don't think you have to do anything here. We don't think you need to pull out lane. We don't, we don't think you, we think it's going to be okay. Would this provision give us the opportunity to say, well, maybe we think you're being a little too conservative state on your traffic impact study and we're a little more concerned about our citizens out on that road. Could we be using this provision to ask for a traffic impact study when there's, when there's clear public concern that is contrary to what YDOT is telling us?
I would say absolutely, there's no requirement in the first place that we reach out to YDOT.
That goes back, they have under, under these statutes, but they control the right of way and access points.
That would be required for adequate.
Yes.
Access, right? To be able to get off of the highway onto their property.
And that would just require a approach license or whatever it is they call it.
Right, but there's standards, you know, there's standards to get off the road and, you know, there's been some things that are like, oh, that doesn't meet our standards. People have to go through a variance process to get the access that they want and most of the time they get it, but like.
Well, and this was, this wasn't a new access point, if I remember that subdivision correctly.
Right.
Was it, were, they were new. It wasn't new, well, oh, well, yeah, so, I mean, under that.
But YDOT also said left turn lane warrants are unlikely to be met. So like they addressed it in their comments. I mean, the one thing I would say about this is like, it would be nice to have like a threshold or something that triggers this, you know? Like I'm thinking, the only time we've ever had a traffic impact study that I, I'm aware of top of my head for a subdivision is the paddocks. They did a traffic study off of Powell Road. And I'm not sure if we requested them to do that or if non cement company requested them to do that or how they'll. I mean, that was, it was kind of a big deal, like, I mean, if there's, I don't know, if we talked to some engineers or whatever, there's like a threshold, it's like, oh yeah, after about twenty, we really should, twenty lots or ten lots, we really should know. And maybe we should just have a threshold there, you know, instead of just saying we can ask any time, and maybe we do want to say that, but I like numbers, I like, okay, at this point, this, this is what we need to do, you know? I don't like to live in the, well, maybe, you know, should we, I, you know?
Is that, is that a good question?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking.
Or even, I mean, that speaks to my concern of just, am I buying this, this kind of a fog?
Sure.
Whatever. Because if YDOT has a threshold, then we could just.
Well, it is necessarily YDOT, it could be off a county road or anything else.
Right, it doesn't have to be.
And that, that threshold might be different on a county maintained road versus.
Or Rob, what do you?
Well, and, and then to go back to another point. On rail side, YDOT needs specific recommendations as to with the, of the access and, and the construction that had to be done to their specific. Allow.
And that was for their. They don't call it an approach license, that's what we call it, whatever the equivalent of that is. And I mean, yeah, of course, that's, that's statutory, so. And I, you know, I didn't mean to say that YDOT doesn't have a role on this, it's just.
It's not spelled out in these statutes that were addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're looking into the possibility of threshold or something there, it's, all right, given the hour, I'd suggest that we stop here if it's acceptable to my colleagues and shot our agenda. Sorry, Commissioner Platt.
No, there's nothing to be sorry about.
Does it, does that work for everybody? Let's skip down and just go through our, some of our updates, check base where we are.
Okay, and please, no objections, keep those cards and letters coming, Mr. Ehers.
Yeah, please send me any ideas or propositions that you'd like to see. In every way, we're getting better and better. Okay. Again, period, no objections, and I'm looking at our off, our on screen folks as well. Next time our. Next time our agenda is growth area management plan update. This is another of the county city cooperative initiatives. It's got its own steering committee. Mr. Gersh was reminding us before the meeting that it was supposed to be done this year on the same track as the cap, but that obviously isn't going to happen. Mr. Gersh, a quick update on where we are on.
Um, yeah, so we've had a few more interviews with some folks about the, the plan, trying to get some more information. We're constantly trying to gather input on this. Really, I don't have much to update. I think at your meeting next Thursday, we'll get a good update from the consultants. Kind of see where we're going next.
Open house.
Yeah, we do have an open house. That's true. On the twenty eighth of this month.
What is that?
That's why we could move the date.
Yes, that's why, yeah. So it's twenty eighth, I think it's from four to six.
But it starts at five thirty.
Five thirty to seven thirty or something.
What's an open house?
Seven thirty. So an open house is just, it's basically a, a meeting to, they'll, they'll have props and things to look at and we invite the public to come and check out what we're doing, ask questions. They may have, I'm not sure what they're going to have at the open house. So it'll be at the Rex.
Tables and stickers.
Yeah, just another way to get information out to the public, so.
I sat through their presentation to city council, county commission last night. Lots to digest there. There's lots of material on the county websites. I came away from listening to their presentation thinking that there's a lot of work here. So this is something that will occupy our time next year. Those of you who are still with us next year. So yeah, it's, it's an exciting project, but it's, it's lots and lots of pieces, defining new zones, defining densities of development, a lot of the stuff that speaks to some of your issues. But, okay. The natural resource management plan, there's.
Approved. So, yeah.
Well, listen. We'll go with the ta-da and kudos to our, our, our representative to the steering committee on that, Commissioner Hanning. You guys did a great job. There's a lot of work in that. I know you had a lot of help. Also, Ms. Bath, who's on the call, is part of that, that group. And they were, they were more than a steering committee. They were a drafting committee, sorting out a lot of, of issues committee. So thank you, guys. Comments, questions on growth area plan or natural resource management? Ms. Hanning, it looks like you want to say so.
I'm, I'm just sort of curious how the growth management plan is lining up with the priority growth areas in the comp plan. Is there, are they somewhat similar or is there vast differences?
Um, so it's kind of a new document, really. You know, we've got, I mean, I, it's hard to say. So like, the, the growth areas we have are kind of around the city for the prior growth area one. And they move out into the county into like the South Laramie Water Sewer District, which is priority growth area two. And then you got your threes and your fours. You know, in, in some way, in some regards, it kind of follows that pattern. But it's more of, it's going to be an inclusive growth area around the city that kind of dissolves those other ones. So. You know, where the most growth is going to happen would, would be in the prior growth area one area. Where a little more dense air, you know, development happens is going to be in the prior to growth area two. So I mean, I guess in that way it lines up, but it's, it's going to look different. It's going to be different. It's going to be, it's kind of its own, own thing.
It's pretty different. Yeah, I'd go along with real different.
Yeah.
It's different. It should be real different.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions there?
Thanks for the update.
Commissioner comments. I think we've all commented copiously. You know, they got something that I think we've overlooked. Seeing then, our next regular meeting is the twelfth. I mean, should you start bringing our lunch and stay in here? We've got one on the twenty first, we've got one on the twenty second. Open house is on twenty eighth at this time? Correct. Okay, and though none of those are compulsory, but do what you can. That leads to, there was a thought that we might want to do a special meeting to move the subdivision regulations forward. Is there any interest in doing that or shall we continue to chip away? I see blazed faces. Anybody want to lobby for a special meeting on subdivisions?
Well, is that primarily?
You've got five meetings until the next one.
Is it primarily Matt's, Matt's baby or? I mean, you sort of leak out it, right? Well, so how this looking about was we've two winters ago, the commissioners requested that we codify splitting separate reviews for like preliminary plat and final plat. And I started working on that when I first came back after taking the bar well over a year ago. That's kind of where we've, where this is all grown out of.
Well, so what would your preference be?
Um, I'm completely fine keeping it with regular meetings. I, cause I don't, I don't think it would.
It said otherwise. You might want to walk out of the room.
I mean, there may be a time and place where a special meeting would help to just kind of get solidified, but I don't think we're there yet.
Okay, okay. That sounds like a good answer.
It was a good question. Certainly, we have great respect for the work that the sheriff is done for us. Okay, item fourteen, citizen comments. We have Ms. Bath, who's attended patiently this long meeting. Anything you'd like to share with us? Okay. It's not. Absent objections, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you for your patience for making progress.
Hey, David. Hey, see you next week.
Hello?
Oh, there's Bonnie.
I just want to commend everyone for their endurance. All right.
Yeah.